Notice, notice is hereby given that the above call meeting, the governing body of the city of Balcony Heights, Texas. We, we open it up first and then we're going to call order, record in a corner and then we go to the invocation. Notice is hereby given that the above call meeting, the governing body of the city of Balcony Heights, Texas, will be held on Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. In the Justice Center located at thirty-three hundred Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, Texas, seven eight two zero one. To consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We're going to call to order and we're going to record the quorum now. Make sure we have everyone here. So I have observed that we have a full quorum. We're now move on to the invocation and pledges of the allegiance to the U S and USA and Texas flag.
Let us pray.
Allegiance. Go ahead. We're going to do the invitation first.
Yes. Heavenly Father, please grant us the wisdom and knowledge to govern all the issues of our community, the welfare and true needs of, of our residents. I pray for the agenda set before us and help us make the right decision for the benefit of our community. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone, for that. Mr. Valverde, thank you for the invocation. Now we will move into public comment period. At this time, citizens who have filled out a registration form, prior to the start of the meeting, may speak on any topic they wish to bring to the attention of the governing body. So as long as the topic is not on the agenda for this meeting. During the citizens to be heard section, no council action may take place and no council discussion or response is required to the speaker. Citizens who wish to speak on a specific agenda item, when that item is called for the discussion, must fill out a registration form prior to the start of the meeting indicating which agenda item they wish to address. So let's see what we have here. We have. We have Ms. Molly Weaver, two twelve Bobby's Lane, resident. Ms. Weaver, are you present? Here, there you go. And you have two subjects. One is frontier trash. Second is loud music from trailer park. Go right ahead. Okay, and you have another one. That's fine. We'll, we'll allow it. No problem.
Okay. Well, first of all, I had to pay my garbage today. And I just remembered how much it was. And I asked them why it was that much. And he says, well, that's what the council decided on. And I'm saying, well, did y'all talk to the people who think, who use it? Well, no, the council took care of it for us. Okay, fine. Why didn't somebody tell us or let us know in advance that this is going to be almost doubled what we've been paying in the past? I mean, I understand if you're a large family and you really need all this stuff. You know, it's, it's, it's okay, but I'm a single mother. And I, I live by myself with about eight cats. My little cat's outside. We don't put out that much trash. But if I can find something, I guess I'll have to start charging it. It's just that why, why do I have to wait until after the fact to hear about this? I mean, because I don't come to the council meetings all the time. Is this, I mean, is it, is it one of those things that's just discussed at the council meetings with the people? Um, I've been to a couple of council meetings and I've never seen anything that was supposed to be discussed with the people who live here. You just tell us what you decided on. And, uh, I just, I mean, I'm not real happy with it. But I understand that you're in a five-year contract and I know how those are. I did, I got stuck with a stupid security thing like that. Anyway, so that's water under the bridge, but I'm just not happy with it. I think that y'all need to start talking to us and, and a lot of times we can't come to the council meetings. If there's a, a paper that you can send out that's letting us know what you're discussing and, and let's see if you can give you some input on it. I mean, you, you notify us of brush pickup. You notify us of everybody who got promoted. You notify us of all the holidays and all the, you know, little things that we have going on within the system. But you don't notify us of things that's going to affect us. And that's what, that's what I think y'all need to start doing. Like for one, there's this person, whoever he is, he's got his radio loud, very loud. It sounds like he's broadcasting. And I can't find out where it's coming from. And I mean, it's inside my house, inside, while I'm asleep, I hear it and it's all night long. And sometimes it's all day long, but day I can't say nothing because nobody's supposed to sleep during the day. But I need to sleep at night. And then when I'm working in my, in my office, I still hear it. And I don't know if I have a magnet to it or what. It's just, it's getting really frustrating. And, uh, I just want to give our mayor a, a pat on the back. I mean, he's trying real hard. He's about the only mayor that's come to my house and asked me if I needed anything or, or, you know, was everything okay? And, uh, I've had people come to my house and all they did was complain. And, you know, I'm just sitting here thinking, why are we complaining so much? Help, help the mayor. I mean, the mayor's, he's, he's trying, you know, and he's, he's the one who's communicating with us. I haven't seen anybody else come communicate with me. I haven't seen anybody else offer any assistance to me. I remember one year, one of our, one of my neighbors was single. She had two kids. And the, the fire department or something came out and painted her house for her. And I thought that was wonderful. You know, the, 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 the neighborhood got together and did something for a person who needed it. You know, and then there's other people here that are elderly that can't do it. I can't paint my house. I can barely mow my grass if that. And, uh, just, you know, have that kind of interaction with, with the people who live here. You know, do something special for them, not just for the, the companies that you bring in and then the businesses that you bring in and, and the streets and for the people themselves. Who are they? What are they doing? You know, can you help them? And it used to be able to be, you used to help us. I remember when Jimmy Rebar, he was enough, he was a sergeant in the police department. I lived here over fifty years. And, uh, they would come to my house all the time. And the only, I mean, the, the police departments helped me like when it was frozen. They'd bring me soap. They'd bring the firemen, they'd come over to turn off my water because I'd always have a leak from the frozen pipes. And, you know, things like that. It's nice to know that they're around and they all need to be given a, a, you know, a pat on the back. But I just miss the the integration, I guess, of the city council with the, with the, with the residents. This before, we used to work together, not for each other or just for ourselves. We used to work together. And I don't see any of that. I don't see any interaction at all. And I don't think that's right. If you're going to be a city council, you supposedly are here for us residents. Act like it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Weaver, thank you. Yes. Of, of what? I did, I gave the name and address. I did leave Ms. Weaver on two twelve Bobby's Lane. So we have another individual, Mr. Former Councilman Charles White, Jr., addressed two eleven Leisure, former councilman and resident, longtime resident.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Employees, I hope y'all have wonderful holidays and use that time before you lose it. Anyway, uh, Chief John O'Hara is going to get tired of me because I keep coming back to the reserve officers with, especially with Hillcrest coming up and certificates of obligation, which is, looks like that's how you, y'all have to go. But, uh, I did find the letter that was put out. Uh, I've scratched through the officer's name primarily because when the police association says to do something, they do it as a group. And when Dominguez left, there was several, there's more than five and less than ten that found a way to get a hold of me and said they were not in favor of a letter they had put out. Not promoting Chief Dominguez. But nonetheless, attention to all reserve officers. I'm going to give this to Mayor Rodriguez. And he can give it to you. Uh, effective August first, twenty fourteen, no Balcony Heights Reserve officers will be permitted to work any police-related side jobs. This will remain in effect till further notice. In order to be perfectly clear, no off-duty jobs are approved as of August first, twenty fourteen, for any and all Balcony Heights Reserve officers. Any officers failing to comply with this will be immediately held accountable and their commissions may be subject to automatic termination. If there are any questions on this matter, please contact Reserve Program Coordinator. So that was what was put out. But with the financing of Hillcrest coming up, it's going to be important to get as much help as we can with the reserves pitching in. I know police officers have a different feeling about reserves because it's like you have not decided this is going to be your full-time career. But still, a lot of them are very knowledgeable and could be very good backup to have, especially if you could see two of them riding in a car together. Where she got a limited amount of hours they work. There was something that came down that they went over sixteen hours. They were considered a employee. So it's a, it's a budgeting thing. But the sergeants and, uh, corporals initiated and ran that program. Uh, getting back to, I was looking at the agenda and there's still issues uh, coming forth of being projected towards uh, Mayor Rodriguez. But anyway, I, I put, I put the numbers down for that time.
Yes.
Appreciate your patience.
You got number three, number nine, number ten, eleven and twelve and thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Those items come up, you can speak on them.
Thank you.
Thank you, former councilman. White. Okay, so those were the only two citizens that had wanted to speak. Um, we will now go in any, do we have any presentations? None?
No, Mayor.
Consent agenda items. We're going to now have A, approval of minutes for special meeting, November sixth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of minutes for regular meeting, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And the finance report for November twenty twenty-four. Do we have any council members that have any concerns or questions regarding those items listed as A, B and C on the agenda? Is there anyone that would like to discuss anything on the documentation provided by staff? Councilman Burton? Okay. All right, I'll give you a few minutes, you guys, to, if there's anything you might want to pick on off of it.
Mr. Burton, could you put on your microphone, please?
Your microphone, sir. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Science, Councilman Science.
Mayor, were you going to speak on the mall payment?
I just brought it to your attention. Uh, if you like, we can ask staff, just kind of give us a little quick rundown on the number. Um, if you like, I, I'll go ahead and Mr. Messick, Matt, bring your attention to.
Mayor, excuse me. What, what item?
It's going to be, well, that's going to go on the finance and we can discuss that on finance instead. And could, would that be okay, Councilman Burton?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll discuss that in, in finance. Is that all right with everyone else?
What's in the check register?
Yeah, what's in the check register for the paid invoice report? It's just going to be a brief. Everyone okay? Okay, good. All right, so anything else? Anybody have any other items they want to discuss? Okay, so let's go ahead and do I entertain a motion to approve said consent agenda items? For many council member to approve.
I'll move to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items in their totality.
Okay, Councilman Sign has moved for that motion. Do we have a second to his movement?
Our second.
Councilman Valverde has second. We should now make a roll call vote. Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Sign?
Yeah.
Councilman Lassia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton? We have a record vote of five oh. Um, motion carries. Okay. Now we have, um, we'll move right along to the agenda items. Going to try to move through these pretty quickly. For some, we're going to spend a little time. For the most part, I'd like to get everybody out of here by eight thirty. So discussion and possible action business items, number one. Special and possible action on finances tools available for the Hillcrest Street, um, Hillcrest Drive, street reconstruction project. Before we jump into that, at what point do we jump in, Mr. Garza, on the finance question we had? On the, uh, on the statement? When would be appropriate to jump into that? No question, just cover it for a minute.
In order for us to discuss it, there has to be something on the agenda.
It was in the, uh, finance. In the, uh, check register.
Okay. We've already approved the consent agenda.
Yeah. We're not, not to not approve it, we just want to.
Well, my recommendation then, in the future, if there is questions on any item on consented agenda item, that item needs to be pulled, the rest of the consent be approved.
We'll do that next time.
But, but if he's got a simple question, basic question on it, then that's okay, but.
A simple question, Mr. Messick? Can you tell us what that hundred thousand? Five nineteen twenty-two on transaction on the first page, all the way down. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Approximately twelve items down on eleven, seven, twenty-four. Woda loan?
Yes, sir, that's the.
Hundred thousand five nineteen twenty-two.
Yes, sir. And that's your quarterly, uh, Woda loan payment to trust bank.
Makes a lot of sense at a hundred thousand. Satisfied with that, Mr. Burton? It's three times four, basically. Is it forty thousand per?
It's one hundred thousand each quarter.
Each quarter.
Four hundred thousand a year.
Yes, sir. That was my question.
Any other questions, Mike? Thank you, Mr. Messick.
Yes, sir.
So let's go ahead and, and discuss the first item of business items. Financing tools available for Hillcrest Drive, street reconstruction project. Is that going to be Mr. Lada or are you Mr. Messick?
You're, you're stuck with me, Mayor, sorry. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, back in twenty nineteen, we began the project of, hey, how are we going to reconstruct Hillcrest Drive? And at that point, uh, council, uh, voted to go with, uh, partner with the area Alamo Metropolitan Organization or MPO and text out for this project. Um, since that time, we've, uh, council has approved that we move forward. Uh, with an environmental study, uh, council has voted to make six S engineering, the, the engineer uh, for this project. And just recently, they've also voted to move ahead with a thirty percent, uh, design of the project. And so the next steps, uh, as we've been baby stepping towards the completion of this thing or getting started, really. Uh, right now, MPO is projecting maybe next year as a possibility of us starting, uh, the construction or, or possibly January of twenty twenty-seven. So we're getting closer to that construction start date. Another hurdle though, that we have to overcome before that is to select a funding method. At this point, MPO wants to know, how do you intend on doing this? And there's basically two options. You can go G O or C O, certificates of obligation or general obligation bonds. And we have Victor here tonight, uh, Mr. Kiroga from Specialty Financing, who can tell you the pros and cons or the advantages and disadvantages of that. But from our perspective, it's important to know which way council wants to go. Because if you go one way, we get real busy next month. If, if not, then we have a little more, uh, flexibility in, in, in actually going forward with the funding. But, uh, it, it's important to know that right now, regardless of what we do tonight, we are not approving moving ahead with the project. We are not approving any funding sources. We're not asking you to spend money. We're not asking you to, to issue debt at this time. We're just asking you, hey, you know, how do you want to proceed with the possible funding of the project? Uh, so after, uh, Mr., after Victor gets done, we'll both be here to answer any questions that you might have. So I had alternative over here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Lado. Thank you for having me here. Further recommendations, Victor Kidoga with Specialized Public Finance. And we are there on, on representing the cities or financial advisors. We're, um, invited here today to provide you information regarding what your financing options are as a Texas city, as a Texas city, we can only allow, or we can only do what the state allows us to do in terms of financing. We can't just go to a bank and, uh, get a loan for a street funding. But, uh, so we prepared, prepared a brief presentation here for you that we handed out. Uh, and I believe it's also, um, on the screen here. And so if you go to the first page after the cover sheet, uh, this is, uh, some of the more common financing tools that cities will utilize uh, in order to fund streets. If we go to the next page. There we go. Thank you very much. And so this is just a, a simple, uh, matrix, just to have everything on one page. But we'll just go through them, uh, one by one here. So general obligation bonds, that's a financing tool that you would have to first have a successful bond election in order to utilize that tool to generate proceeds for whatever project you're wanting to do with those. In this case, we're talking about street improvements. Um, in terms of the interest rates, this type of bond or debt issuance gets the best type of interest rate for bond investors. They enjoy these and will offer the lowest interest rate based on market conditions. The second tool that's available are certificates obligation. In terms of, uh, interest rates, they're identical to general obligation bonds. Investors and rating agencies really don't see a difference in those two financing tools. Um, the only difference is how you, uh, get there and how accessible those financing tools are. For general obligation bonds, we have to have a bond election and you could only do that under current state law, uh, twice a year or during a, a uniform election date in May or November of each year. So you have to base, you know, your funding on when are we going to get approval from the voters? You know, how, how much? And when are we going to actually issue that debt and fund those projects? The certificates obligation offer more flexibility. So you're not having to wait for a specific, uh, time in the year to have a bond election. Um, certificates obligation, uh, will allow you to be a little bit more flexible with your funding timeline for your project. And that'll help you in terms of locking in an interest rate if the interest rate environment is favorable. Uh, we'll go to a little bit more detail on that. The third tool are tax notes. However, based off of the amount of funding that you're potentially needing for the, uh, financing of the street projects, you'll likely need to amortize that debt, uh, past a seven-year period. And for tax notes, um, you don't need, you, you, you could issue that debt, but you have to pay that debt off within a seven-year period. And so if you're talking about a larger project or maybe we need a little bit more funding, well, we might need to spread out those payments over a longer period. Um, and so if you go to the next page on general obligation bonds, as I indicated earlier, under state law, we could only have a bond election on a, what we call a uniform election date. That's May or November of each year as current law stands. If the next election cycle, uh, in order to present a bond election to your community would be May third, two thousand twenty-five, and the window for the city to call that election would be February third, uh, through February fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-five. And so that date is just right around the corner. What you would need to determine as a city council, if you do want to go the general obligation route is how much do we want to ask the voters to allow us to issue on their behalf? And, um, the project has going to be, uh, listed as well on that proposition if you want to present that. So all that has to be done no later than February fourteenth, uh, in order to have a bond election in May, two thousand twenty-five. Assuming the successful bond election, this is a route that you take. Uh, you'll get funding probably about, uh, July, August, September timeframe of two thousand twenty-five. And so again, we would first have to conduct a bond election in order to access general obligation bonds. If you go to the, yes, sir.
Uh, August, September of two, two, twenty what?
Twenty-five. At the earliest. And also keep in mind, and we talked about this, Mr. Messick and I, is that you could ask the voters, let's just say, I'm, I'm just, I'm just making up numbers. Don't hold me to this. The city's not planning this at this point. Let's just say we ask them for ten million dollars. Uh, if you get that voter authorization come May, two thousand twenty-five, as a city council, once you receive that authorization, it's up to you on when and how to issue that debt. You don't have to issue the full ten million dollars all at once. Uh, you could issue it over time and, and in pieces. And so just, uh, uh, keep that in mind too. Uh, but, uh, we're still stuck with the fact that we have to plan for a bond election, conduct a bond election. After that, we're free to, uh, move forward. Uh, one thing to keep in mind too, is that if we have a bond election and, um, it fails, then we cannot use certificates obligation as, uh, another financing tool for the same project for a three-year period. There'd be a, a kind of a blackout in a sense. And so if we fail the first bond election, we can't use certificates obligation for a three-year period. So you're kind of tying your hands, um, if you go first, the general obligation route versus a certificates obligation route. And so that's just some of the nuances that we spoke about with administration in order to, uh, figure out what would be the most flexible tool for the city to utilize. If you go to the next page on page number three, uh, this is the, these are the steps required for certificates obligation. Uh, in our opinion and the market's opinion, we believe that this is still, uh, involves a lot of transparency based off of what the state law requires us to do before we issue this type of financing tool. So with certificates obligation, uh, and again, we don't have to wait on, on when we're going to have the election. This could be just based off of the, uh, councils and the city's discretion in terms of timing of when you want to start receiving funding. Uh, but here, basically, the first step would be that the city council would determine what the project, uh, amount is going to be, uh, identify the project. And at that same council meeting, you would approve a notice of intent resolution just to get the process going. Under state law, you would have to publish that notice of intent resolution in the, uh, paper of journal circulation. I'm assuming the San Antonio Express News. Um, let's just say we do that on, on a Sunday, uh, the first public question comes out. Then we have to follow that up the next week, uh, consecutively on the following Sunday to republish that notice of intent resolution. That notice of intent resolution will give notice to your, um, constituents and, and your, your taxpayers that you intend to issue debt on their behalf through the, uh, certificates obligation financing tool. It'll let them know the maximum amount of debt that you want to borrow on their behalf. And it's going to let them know what project you're going to utilize, uh, once you do issue that debt. And, uh, so that, that, that debt issuance is going to be limited to the projects that you identify in that notice of intent resolution. There won't be too much flexibility to go beyond that for what you stated on the notice of intent resolution. So again, still, uh, quite a bit of transparency. You would also have to post that on your, uh, city website as well. So, uh, try to get the word out. And that first publication on step two, what that does, it starts a forty-five day clock. And basically, we cannot lock in an interest rate on the certificate obligation or move forward on actually incurring that debt until that forty-five day clock, uh, runs up. And so during that forty-five day clock, the voters have a right to petition and to, uh, uh, halt the debt. Uh, but, uh, again, it's just another level of transparency that most cities are comfortable with if they want to be flexible in terms of getting the money and they end up using certificates obligation, um, uh, for the most part. And so for certificates obligation, from start to finish, uh, from step one to step five, you're looking at about seventy-five to ninety calendar days. Uh, so from the time you tell us to start moving forward on step one, to the time where you receive the monies in your project account to address your project, um, that's about seventy-five to ninety days by the step one to by the time you get the funding in your project account. Some information here for, on page four regarding, um, the funding types that Texas cities utilize. Uh, the staff asked us to compile this information. So since two thousand twenty-two, all Texas cities, uh, when they're financing new projects, uh, this is public data that we're able to retrieve. Um, you could see there that all Texas cities since two thousand twenty-two, they've issued nine hundred eleven. You could see there that all Texas cities since 2022, they've issued 911 financings for new projects. The vast majority, or 85% of those were through the use of certificates of obligation. So this shows you how popular and flexible these tools are for many other Texas cities. Of the 911 transactions, 134 were through general obligation bonds where they held a bond election first. So that was only 15%. We were also asked to generate this data for smaller population cities. So we just looked at a population of 15,000 or under. And even in that case, it's even more evident that certificates obligation or a vast majority of smaller cities and middle-sized cities will utilize certificates obligation to fund their projects primarily because of their efficiency and the attractive interest rate that you're able to get for certificates obligation. The, yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, great. And so a couple more slides here before we end the presentation. But if you go to page number five, you could see the main reasonings why cities utilize certificates obligation, primarily because they're transparent. You're still giving notice to your taxpayers that you're moving forward with this. There's still some restrictions. There's only a certain amount that you could list on there and the projects that you're going to use. Efficiency, when we say that, we're, you know, interest rates are always moving quite a bit. And so right now, we're still in a favorable borrowing environment. And so some folks like to utilize certificates obligation because they could lock in the interest rate on their financing a little bit quicker. They have a little bit more certainty of when they could lock in that interest rate on their financing. Also because we'll have access a little bit sooner through certificates obligation. We're not waiting for a bond election to occur. That could also help with any type of reduction in inflation or escalation costs on those projects. And so you're not waiting around as projects prices continue to go up. As we talked about earlier, bond elections or GOs do require bond elections. And so we have to tailor our funding timeline based off of that. And, you know, the reason why cities prefer certificates obligation is because both of these tools, whether GOs or CEOs, they're going to get the exact same interest rate. Investors don't really see a difference in them. The only difference is how as a city do we get there? Do we have a bond election or do we go through the certificate obligation process and still give notice to your taxpayers that you're moving forward with this debt before you actually incur it? The final page here, ladies and gentlemen, is we just ran some what-if numbers here. And so we're in this assumption, we're just want to see, okay, so if we borrow a certain amount of money, what are the average annual principal and interest payments going to be based off of that borrowing amount? And also what is the INS tax impact? And so the anticipation is that if you issue either general obligation bonds or certificates obligation for funding of streets, we would utilize the interest in sinking fund tax rates. So basically, property taxes will be utilized to repay the debt. And so we ran some scenarios here and the assumptions were we would issue a 20-year CEO or a GEO bond. Here, I'm being very conservative. I'm assuming a fixed interest rate of 5%. We could get a lot lower than that, but just want to be conservative with you. The present taxable values that the city has to work with, the property values that you utilize to set your tax rate and collect tax revenues for the repayment of debt is $343.7 million. That's what these numbers are based upon, a tax collection rate of 98%. And if you were to move forward on one of these financings during this current fiscal year, those debt payments don't actually start until the next fiscal year. So 2025, 2026, they have an opportunity to budget for it and to set the appropriate tax rate for that payment as they come on. And so to go over the matrix here, let's just say we borrowed $1 million. Well, over a 20-year period, the average annual principal and interest payment for a million-dollar financing is a little over $80,000. Based off of our current tax base, that INS tax rate to support that $80,000 payment will have to be, considerably speaking, about 2.38 cents per $100 valuation. So we ran the same exercise for various amounts. And you could see there, if you wanted to borrow up to $9 million, the annual payments over 20 years per year would be $722,000. And the INS tax rate impact would be a little bit above 21.4 cents per $100 valuation. That's the tax rate you would have to set in order to make that annual principal and interest payment. I know that was a mouthful, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask me. But again, I think the theme here is that most Texas cities do utilize certificates obligation to fund their projects because of the advantages we spoke about. But at the end of the day, it's really up to y'all as to what you're most comfortable with. And either way, we'll assist you and guide you through that process.
Counsel, anybody have any questions for Mr. Quiroga?
So your numbers are based on a fixed interest rate then?
Yes, sir, it is.
What about a variable? I mean, if?
You know, most Texas or municipalities don't do that. A lot of times, a fixed interest rate is going to be your most conservative interest rate because it provides you certainty for that this 20-year period. We're going to have a fixed interest rate and our payments are going to change. The only way they're going to change or that interest rate changes is if you in the future decide to either pay it off early or if you want to refinance it if the interest rates are better. The more conservative route to go and what primarily most of my clients go, particularly city clients, is going to be a fixed interest rate just for that certainty factor. But just keep in mind, you're not stuck for 20 years. In all likelihood, you're probably going to either refinance that in a few years down the road or maybe even pay it off early. So you'll have options even though it's a fixed interest rate. But what it does give you, it gives you certainty that my payments are not going to change in the future.
No balloon payments.
No, no, sir. No, sir. Not on this particular debt.
So I have a couple of questions for Mr. Messick, our finance. How much money are we needing to borrow? What's going to be the amount that we're going to need that we're looking at to borrow for Crestview?
Yes, sir. As it stands now, and of course, MPO and TaxNot, you know, could always change this. But we're looking at $5 million for the city's portion of it, of which I'm hoping that we could probably swing maybe a million of that in the capital fund. And so, but you know, by the time you get to the project, I'll stick with 5 million. I would say that's the safe number for now.
Okay, to be safe, about $5 million we're going to need. And that's basically what we're looking at. Mr. Quiroga, I made some notes regarding these, hopefully I can help my council on some of the pros and cons. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
Some of the notes I wrote was that certificate of obligations in Texas, while offering a way for local governments to fund projects, also have potential downsides, including the lack of public input and transparency, which is something that you mentioned it was not, but potential for increased debt without voter approval and the possibility of higher taxes. Lack of public input and transparency. CEOs, which certificate of obligations, allow local governments to issue debt without a public vote, potentially leading to projects being funded without the explicit consent of the taxpayers. That's a true statement, right?
Yes.
The process of issuing a CEOs might not be as transparent as a bond election, which is the GEO route, if we take that route. Potentially leading to less public awareness and scrutiny. Increased debt without voter approval can also be led to in the CEOs, which can lead to increased debt without the need for a public vote, potentially burdening taxpayers with long-term obligations they didn't approve. The use of CEOs can bypass the checks and balances associated with voter-approved bonds, potentially leading to excessive borrowing. And there is a potential for higher taxes as a result. While CEOs might not directly increase the tax rate, it can still lead to higher tax bills if property valuations increase. If the projects funded by CEOs require ongoing maintenance or operational costs, this could potentially lead to higher taxes in the future. There's other concerns I wrote, the ability to fund multiple projects with a CEO can be confusing. So we're only going to do one, right, with that CEO, correct?
It's at your discretion. It's at your discretion. You could include multiple projects in one CEO financing.
Okay. And then, so there's others, but that was the main thing that I had put down. And then I was looking at the plus and minus of the general obligation. So I'd just like to hear your recommendation, which would you, and I'll elaborate a little bit on that, put some input. But from your perspective as our finance director, what would you recommend that we go with? The GO or the CEO from your perspective? I think I have the answer, but I want to.
If it wasn't for one thing, I would say, let's go with a bond. It is the most transparent. But as you have heard and as we have learned, a CEO is just as transparent. Either way, it's going to require council interacting with the public right to sell this. And there is a mechanism where they can stop a CEO as well.
Right.
But if this, if this bond election fails, this project's over. We're done with them. MPO's done with us. TaxNot's done with us. And we're still on the hook to pave the street at probably a higher cost. And oh, by the way, you got to wait three years before you get the funding. So just because of that alone, it's better to have it in hand, right? Than have the dream out there. So I would recommend CEOs just based on that.
Okay. The concern I had from my perspective was, you know, reviewing our budget, some of the things we'd disclose to the community on, you know, the potential deficits we face every year, the burdening of the WODA investment we made over there that's constantly, you know, hanging over our neck as an albatross, the loss of the $500,000 in the cameras. So what we need is to make sure we have assurance on the CEO bond. Because under the general bond, that would require us to put up all funds that we have under the general operating budget to guarantee that GEO fund, according to my understanding.
No, sir, that's, that's not correct. And so, and if I could just maybe step back about the transparency and, you know, what you indicated, yes, it's true. So what I told you in terms of the transparency that is still available through shift to calivation, that's the minimum amount that the state requires. The minimum amount is you approve the notice of intent resolution as a council. You decide on the budget that you want to work with, how much you want to borrow, what you're going to use with that borrowing money. And then we have to publish that in the paper, put it on the website, and then publish it in the paper again to give notice to your taxpayers. But that's not to say that the council or the city can't go above and beyond that. If you want to provide even more transparency to your community, you know, if you wanted, it's hardly ever done, you're correct, but there, you, there's nothing to say that you can't do. Where you can't do a town hall, you can't do a special meeting specifically to talk about this project, how much we're talking about, what the tax impact is going to be and what the benefits are going to be. If we go this route, because there's some matching with state funds versus if they walk away, then you're going to have to fund the whole thing by yourself down the line. That's going to cost you twice as much than what we're talking about now. So, so yeah, so you know, a bond election, yes, it does have transparency. But that's not to say people are going to go out and vote at the very high clip or anything like that. But certificates obligation still offer you that transparency, still gives voters an opportunity to stop it if they're not in agreement with it. And in both cases, Mayor, especially in my analysis here. So what we're talking about here is new debt to cover the street project that's we're in partnership with the state to get matching funds. In all the scenarios, whether it's a million dollars, $4 million, $5 million, in all those cases, we're talking about an increase to the tax rate. So I don't want there to be any confusion. We're not saying that whether you go GEO or CEO, that there is no tax rate increase. In everything we showed you here on the final page, it all requires a tax increase. This is all brand-new stuff that we need to start paying for. The, the good news is that you have a little bit of debt right now outstanding through tax notes that are going to be paid off during the current fiscal year and also the next fiscal year. So we could plan it so that, you know, these payments that you're already making, you'll just kind of, you're already used to making those payments. So now they're going to be diverted over to a new project. But overall, we're still talking about a rate increase. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding for that. This is not going to increase your tax rate. Everything we're talking about, GEO or CEO, it's going to require a tax rate increase. I just wanted to clarify that for you.
What we don't want is, we just don't want our citizens to happen with what happened with Frontier. And that's just a real good example, where they get the surprise increase in their taxes without prior knowledge or knowing that this CEO, but we got to do it. Like you say, we can't not do it and lose that money. So we either just have to make a decision, which is the less burdensome for it or the taxpayer.
Yes, sir.
And that's all I always think about is, you know, as a taxpayer, we have to worry about that as the ones that are paying full rates.
Yeah, nobody likes taxes. Yeah, no, that's right. The T-word is a bad word. And also, Mayor, I got kind of rambling there, but I did not address your most recent question about, are we putting up the general fund when we have a general bond election? The answer is no. So when you, if you do go the general obligation route or the CEO route, either way, the bond investor, when they purchase that debt from you, whether, again, same thing, GEO, bond election or CEO notices, the only security mechanism or collateral, if you want to use a better word, a more understandable word, that the bond investors has is access to your interest in sinking fund property taxes. That tax rate, your INS tax rate, which currently we use for the tax notes, that tax fund can only be used for the repayment of principal and interest payments that are currently outstanding. The bond investor cannot go after, you know, they can't come and take actual physical property that you own or anything like that. Or they can't come and take your MNO funds or anything like that, or general funds. So I just wanted to clarify that too. We're talking specifically about the interest in sinking fund tax fund. The investors, if there's a default or anything, they can't go after your city hall. They can't go after any other real property that's your own under state law.
So, Mr. Quiroga, you concur with our finance director that CEO would be the best course of action or what's your?
Based on, you know, obviously, I don't live here or pay taxes here, but people hire me to give me, give them their opinion. I give them their options. And based off of what the vast majority of Texas cities do, particularly cities your size, 94% are going to do certificates obligation based on the fact that we have, that gives you flexibility with timing. You know, if I was, if I was there in your shoes, I'd probably say, you know, CEOs, based off of the facts that we're talking about with matching grants, and we don't want that to go away, the CEOs are going to give you a little bit more flexibility. That's not to say that the voters can't stop it again, you know, they could still stop it if they want to under state law. But it's going to give you a little more flexibility to pursue that state grant matching funds.
Be willing to potentially, if we hold a public hearing, just for information.
Absolutely, yeah.
As we're hearing more and more from our community, they want to become more involved. They want to hear more. They don't want surprises. And so if we can maybe have a meeting, call a public meeting, give notice to the public, have them show up, do another little presentation like that specifically for that. And then get them to know that there's a potential for the increase of taxes if we do go forward with GEO or CEO. And the GEO is going to have a lower interest rate, correct?
Same. So GEO and CEO, same interest rate, yeah.
Well, I'm satisfied with everything that I've heard. Anybody else? Anything else with the other input we've had?
But I am here at your convenience. I'm here to assist you. And so if you want me to come back and relay this information to another audience, I'll be happy to do that. Great, thank you. It's good to see everybody. Thank you.
Okay.
And so Mayor, if I may, so for this item, ultimately, what we're trying to get from Mayor and Council or from council is which way do you want to go? We need to be directed a certain way because if it's the bond route, then we're going to get real busy next month. And there's a lot of stuff that has to happen. If you want to go CEO, then that's a little slower pace. So we kind of need to know now to plan for January.
Is council ready to take action right now and make a move for a vote to go either route, GEO or? Or you want to, what do you want to do? Table it or what do you, what's your, what's your pleasure, counsel? What would you like to do?
Again, they're seeking a motion as to which option, and then that way they'll start the process and not, not a final decision at all tonight, just the process.
So what action do we want to take on the possible action on financing? As it reads, you want to clarify that, right? As it reads, discussion and possible action on financing tools available for Hillcrest Drive, street reconstruction. So we've heard the options. So do they need to make a decision on which option they want to take?
They need, correct, that the finance, the staff and the financial advisors need a motion at direction as to which option to pursue.
That's what I understood. Okay.
And specifically because if we're going to do a bond election, it's, it's going to be early February.
Needs to read specifically whether you're seeking a GEO bond route or you're seeking a CEO bond route. So give it a few seconds or minutes to think about it, counsel. And then whoever, whoever would like to make a motion while Mr. White makes a couple of comments. He's got, he's on the agenda for number three. So he's not on for number one. He's just on for three, but I'll allow it if you like.
Counsel, I know for years, as council worked very hard, as city administrators to get funding for Hillcrest. So it's sort of, if you go the bond election and you lose, you're out three years. But what are the chances of getting back in line to get two-thirds of this paid for versus our one-third? And the other question being, Mr. Messick, how's our credit rating? And the other question being, Mr. Messick, how's our credit rating?
Early as we stand.
Or should we ask the?
Yeah, it, it's good. I, I think it's A minus, B plus.
A minus what?
There's official ratings. I'd have to look at the order, independent on which credit agency.
So we're medium, medium. A plus is good. A minus is questionable.
Yeah, well, I don't think we'd have any problem getting this.
Okay. All right. Anyone else, council?
I mean, this, this is just kind of, I knew, I knew we were going to discuss this, but I don't, I don't really have a consensus of making a, a decision tonight, because, I mean, I know we need to get Hillcrest done. I think as a council, we need to all talk about it and see which, which, truly which way we want to go. I mean, I'm, 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 I'm more leaning towards the GO, just to be upfront with citizens. I know it's a more voting and stuff that goes before the voters, but.
Did you have, did you understand?
Oh, I understand.
The GO fails.
I understand.
Okay. Then, then we have a problem because now we don't have the financing instrument, but we have to meet the obligations of the city.
I have.
EMO, MPO, you mentioned it was?
Yes, sir. Mayor Council, if the, if it fails, then we can't go forward with a project basically with their assistance. And so we would be fully funding the project on our own, but we would still have to wait three years before we go out for COs.
Thank you for the clarification.
May I be recognized? Yes. So, Mr. Burton, to your concern, if we don't take any action tonight, then you are essentially locking us into either the CO or pushing us off for another year before the next general election would take place. So if they don't have this direction by this, this evening, if I'm correct, Mr. Messick, they won't have sufficient time to get this on the ballot and all that for this coming election in May of 2025. So.
Yes, sir. And that's fine. If you want to go the bond route, that's, that's fine. But we need to know now because there's a lot of things that have to happen early February. There won't be, and that will be before the February council meeting. And so you're probably looking at a special election or two prior to the January council meeting, and then something that has to be approved then to make the May. If you don't make the May, then we have to go November. And at that point, MPO and Tax Dot are looking at us and saying, do you guys really want to do this? You keep pushing this back. They're waiting to move ahead, and they want to see that we have that funding. And again, we're not obligating anything right now. We're just saying something I can go back to MPO with and say, this is what council, this is how they want to find it. That doesn't mean we're going to finance it that way. And you always have the option to change it, of course. If you, you might say, let's do it in November after all. You have the right to do that as well. But just for getting the ball rolling and making these deadlines, that's why we're asking for, especially if you want to go to bond route, that we know that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Messick.
I did have, I'm sorry, Mr. Krogan, I did have, I did have one question for Mr. Messick. So on this project, are we locked in on the current design and the construction plan for Hillcrest or?
Asking the finance guy that one, I don't.
Mr. Lahr, maybe the person asked.
So right now they're at 30%, but Tax Dot is driving the train. It's the basic plan is done.
That's with the bike lane and all that stuff.
Correct. The shared use path and so forth. There, there's not much going to change from that unless Tax Dot just all of a sudden comes out of nowhere and says, this is now a new requirement. But the, the basic design has not changed. It doesn't look like it's going to change anymore. It shouldn't. So, so like I said, you know, we cleared the storm drain issue that we had with them. So that was probably the biggest hurdle. So, so the next hurdle is, is the land use purchase that we, little strips that we got to buy. And, and so our current schedule that we worked out with MPO, because we had to extend it a year, is that their whole, you know, they're, they're aware that at that time, we were thinking we're going to go to election in May. If, if we don't get the election in May and don't go the CO route and you push it to November, then we do got to go back to them immediately and let them know that either push the schedule out some more, if they will allow us, or they just may drop us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krogan.
Just one, one comment, too. And I know I talked a lot already, so I'll be just a quick comment, but I know it's a tough decision, you know. Either one, as we demonstrated in here, certificate of obligation are very popular, still provide transparency. But I understand, you know, the concern about voter input. But I do want to provide some perspective. The building that we're sitting in right now was financed with certificates of obligation back in the late 90s. That debt has since been paid off. That was a 20-year debt. The last GO bond election that the city had was, I think, like maybe the 60s or something. But the city has still addressed its capital improvement needs through the issuance of COs, like what was used for this facility, or through tax notes when you had to buy equipment purchases or do other type of projects. I just want to put some perspective that COs, it's not something like new or mysterious. It's something that the city has utilized before effectively to construct this facility and has since paid it off. But, you know, I just want to add those two cents and answer your questions.
So what we need to do in the future, like our new city administrator we're going to be hiring, that's one of the things we need to task him to make sure that he maintains a proactive approach. Our former city administrator that we had, I don't know why he got dragged out. And the proactive approach, where we have to make a rash decision right now. We got to give you an answer. And we didn't have enough time to go over these things in the past meetings that perhaps proactively we should have done to not rush into a decision right now. Now we're almost pushed against the back wall, so to speak, because we have to make a decision so quickly, based on the fact that we are facing the three-year possible, you know, delay if we don't act. So it's basically, I think the council should be thinking about, what's your current financial situation? How stable is the city? And be looking at any possible foreseeable shortness of revenue that may come in for whatever reason. Because we're teetering on such a very edge on our finances that any lack of revenue coming in, pandemic, whatever it may be, will push us over the cliff. It'll push us over the cliff, and we're going to be in serious trouble to make our obligations. So with the $5 million we've got out over here, 500,000 lost revenue back on the cameras, the excessive costs of having to fund this project, all in combination is what we have to be considering as a council and as a governing body, to make sure that we don't task ourselves overly task, because then the taxpayer is going to be on the hook for it. And they're going to be anyway, but that's the only thing I just would caution my colleagues to think about. How far can we extend ourselves in making the decision we're going to make because of what might happen, what could happen? And so you have to ask yourself, give yourself all those elements to think about, to make the decision right now, what you're doing. If you feel that it is not appropriately, we can always call a special meeting right away. And if everybody's in agreement, we call a special meeting and we address it before the new year. Gives everybody an opportunity to think about it. You know, we have that ability to do that. We don't need to make the decision right this minute unless the council feels that that's something you want to do. What say you, council?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Sellers, go ahead.
Albert, you mentioned Tax Dot. So I wanted to ask if all avenues have been researched to Tax Dot to find out why they're only paying half $1 million? It is, can they pay more? Will they pay more?
So the, the way it actually works, sir, is Tax Dot actually has been hired by MPO. They're the project manager. So they have no, it's really, the, the, the money came to MPO, whether exactly where it came, whether it's out of the Tax Dot budget or whether legislature gave them the money. But that's, that's who gave us the money, MPO. And then somehow they have that arrangement where they get to pick who they want to manage the project, and they pick Tax Dot. So yes, they forced us to pay Tax Dot to govern our project. So that's why we have to go through them. That's why all our meetings, to approve our designs, everything has to be approved by Tax Dot. That's not a Tax Dot road. It's just that they've been contracted by MPO to govern that or manage that project. And that's why we're dealing with them.
Councilman, you yield the floor. Finished. Okay. Mr. Messick?
Yes, sir. I would just like to add to that. When this project started out, it wasn't $10 million, right? It was considerably less. And then coming out of COVID, inflation hit, boom. MPO has been, they, they've bent over backwards to work with us. They recognize that there is inflation, and they're more than happy to make sure that you're still giving us that roughly 50% of this project. So can we get more? Probably not. But they have shown a willingness to work with it. As the project increases, their contribution will too.
Thank you, Mr. Messick. Any other questions? So I guess the question before you is, you want to take action tonight, or you want to do a special meeting and give you time to consider it? Decide whether you want to go C, a vote, or you want to go with a GO?
Excuse me, Mayor. I think, I think we, we do need to have a meeting for us, and we can discuss this into a little bit more details. Because, I mean, although right now I'm, I'm leaning towards a CO, but I, and I know we have to do something because like Mr. Messick said, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. But I would still feel more comfortable if we would get together and talk about this, discuss a little bit more.
So we have two council members. Your colleagues have indicated that they'd like to possibly examine this a little bit more. I'd like input from the rest of the council, individual, Mr. Science?
So I think we have enough information to actually move forward. Like Mr. Messick and Mr. Kiroga have said, this doesn't lock us into anything. This just gives them guidance right now to move forward and begin planning and beginning working towards getting this project started. We delay it more, it's just going to push it down the road and puts us, puts us, puts us at risk of losing this MPO funding. So I think we, I think we have enough information. Mr. Kiroga's presentation was very informative. I think it had all the information we need to move forward.
And pretty much echoing Mr. Science, I think we have received plenty of information. And like we've been told and reinforced and reiterated to us that we do have the option to slow down if, if, if need be. But if it's for the sake of direction, I would be in favor of the CO.
Councilman Sellers? You want me to move to Councilman Burton? Give me a chance?
No, I will move, I'll, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, of course.
I'll move to make a motion to provide guidance to the city finance director to move forward with the.
The motion should read that you want either a CO vote or a GO.
You, you're in terms of those.
I didn't pick up.
Yes, so move to make a motion to give guidance to the finance director to begin using the, the CO.
Okay, so you want to, you're moving.
Certificate of Obligation, yes.
All right. Do we have a second to the motion?
A second.
Councilman Valverde, second the motion. So do we go ahead and call for the vote? Councilman Valverde?
Yay.
Councilman Science?
Yay.
Councilman Lysel?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Nay.
Okay. So we have four. One name. Motion carries.
Mayor, if I might just say, just say thank you again to Victor and his staff. They're very helpful. They bend over backwards to help the city any chance they get. They always provide us a relatively quick service and decent informations. We're thankful for that.
I've known Victor for more than 25 years. He's, his company, wherever he's at, they're excellent at what they do. And wherever he has worked, he's been very proficient at what he does. Thank you, Mr. Kiyoga. Yeah. Right. Okay. Thank you, council, very much for your input. You too, Merry Christmas to you and have a good one. Okay. All right. So we have number two now. Discussion and possible action city administrator vacancy update, summer presentation, Mr. Lara and Ms. Carrero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So basically, your update, as we mentioned in our timeline, that we were going to update you on what we currently have. So we're, we're getting, now we're getting some good applications and we're, we're seeing some. For a little while there, I was wondering, but, but no, as of today, we've received 10. Three of them have city administrator experience, and eight of them, including the three, have worked at some department level. So, so again, you're getting folks that have a municipal experience, which is always something good to, to have. And just a reminder on our timeline, so like I said, we're, we're, we're doing well. We will continue to advertise till January 5th. So we anticipate we're going to get some more between now and then.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. What's the cutoff date, just out of curiosity?
January 5th.
January 5th, not the 19th or this?
No, the 5th is the, when we're not going to take any more applications.
So the 5th would be the last time an applicant put their application.
Correct. Got it. Correct. And so, so again, we'll, we'll continue to monitor those as we get them in. And what I want to try to do for you is those that have done city administrator experience or worked in other cities. I usually try to go and look at the cities they came from, seeing what I can find. So again, this will help you when you get your packets for each of those individuals. So you can formulate some questions that you may want to have on their previous experience. And so that's going to happen after the 5th, when the, we, we're no longer taking any more. Then on January 7th, we're going to distribute all the applications to every councilman and mayor. And so, so you'll have a copy of it and you'll get to review it. And then on the 8th, just as a reminder, so you can already start thinking of what questions that you want to ask these applicants. And so as you start to figure out which questions you want to ask and finalize that, you can go ahead. Right now, I would send them to the city secretary, so she can compile them. And basically, what she'll do is eliminate the duplicates, because obviously you're, y'all are going to come up with the same question. So to try to get those questions down and create those set of questions. And then once those questions are finalized, then you'll get to review them on, right now it's projected. Again, y'all can change this timeline any way you'd like. The 13th, you'll get together, that's the projected on the timeline. And you'll review all the applications. So you've had them for about a week, so you'll get to look them over. At the same time, you'll, you'll then get to look at your questions, get to finalize them, review them as a group, and then make sure that, okay, we're good with these. If something's missing, you can add it at that time. Of course, you can always add it later. But, but here's, you're trying to get that finalized. So you have your standard set of questions. And then, so at that point, you're going to look at those applications that you've already had looked at, actually. You'll, you'll then decide who do you want to interview. So depending on how many you want to interview, you want to interview two or three, that's up to y'all. But again, just remember, the more you want to interview, the longer it's going to take. But like I said, you should, you should have, you know, the good ones should start sticking out, the ones you want to go interview. Of course, you don't like any of the interviews, you can always interview some more. But anyway, that, so that right now, that, those interviews would be currently scheduled for the January council meeting. Again, y'all can have a special meeting for that, or y'all can do it on that. I've seen it done both ways in different cities. And then hopefully, once you make your selection, you should be able to get that person on board sometime by mid to late February. So that's the timeline. Any questions on that? Well, we go to the, kind of the same part of this update. We have a presentation, or not a presentation, but somebody here would like to talk to you about some services that she offers. And one of the things that she does offer is something y'all will definitely need during this process.
Want to hear the presentation first, Councilman Burton?
I was going to ask.
Okay, go ahead.
13 is special meeting then, right? And the 20th would be regular council.
27, 27, I believe is your regular, your fourth.
That would be the.
The fourth Monday, right?
That's, that's the fifth Monday.
Is it? It's the fourth.
Oh, you're correct, you're correct. Okay, thank you.
So again, like I said, y'all are on, you're up, you're, you're doing fine, you're doing fine. I think you'll, you'll get there, no problem. Any other questions on the vacancy? Where I introduce ours?
January 8th formulate practical, um, the questions for the applicants you, you've mentioned.
Right, so on the, on the 8th, y'all will need to email your questions to the city secretary and, and.
You'll distribute all the applications.
Right, so when we distribute those applications, we'll send out another reminder that, hey, please send us your questions so that we can compile them.
And 13th we review. And then at our regular January fourth Monday of the month, we will then potentially have a selection if we want at that time.
Correct. If you, if you do your interviews that day, right? Right, again, it's, it's up to y'all. If y'all don't, if y'all feel, if you have a full agenda that day, you may decide to have a special and interview them separately. But I, trust me, I've seen it both ways. Where people have been interviewed till like midnight.
It'll be on January 27th.
Correct. That's, that's the time.
Okay, any other questions for anyone? Okay, let's go ahead and move up with the presentation.
Okay, so, so the next one is, we have Sarma, Mary Helen Guerrero. And so what their company provides is employment screening. So this is a good opportunity to utilize their services. And one of the biggest things that they offer, if you saw in the background information, we use Checker. I think that's, I guess that's how you say it. Those are the screenings that we get for our administrative and fire. And you also have a proposal that was submitted in your packet that you should see some of the different options that they provide. One of the biggest things that they provide that y'all can use is they can check, actually two things if you want. Definitely your references. So once you get it down, you'll have the option whether to check the references when you, before you do your, your interviews. Or you can wait and then do it on your final. And then they can do that service for you, they can contact the references. Because they'll know what to ask, you know, legally and, and not get anybody in trouble. And so that, that's good. So they can then provide you a response and say, okay, based on their references, this is what we got. And the other thing they can do is they can check their education as well. So if you want to make sure somebody's not pulling the wool over your eyes and make sure that they truly do have that master's degree or whatever they claim to have, they can verify that for you. But at this time, let me go ahead and introduce Mary Helen Guerrero from Sarma.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for having me here. And I would like to give you a little bit of background on Sarma. Many of you might even know or be familiar with San Antonio Retail Merchants Association. Also, of course, known as Sarma, of course, our acronym. And Sarma has been around since 1907. They started first with doing consumer credit reports for the public. And also helping people get their credit together as well. Over the years, they have ventured into not only background screening, but also mortgages, mortgage, uh, credit reports and collections as well. So there's many, well, three different venues, I guess, that we could help. But here, of course, we're focusing on the background screening. We do business all over the country as well as here, of course, in San Antonio. And San Antonio holds our corporate office. We also do all the processing here as well. I would be the first point of contact, though we have a wonderful customer service department that's also available as well to answer all of your questions. It is a very highly, very high security for all of the information that we provide to our clients. Many of our clients call our office or are building the fortress because it's really hard to get in. But of course, there's a good reason for that, it's very sensitive information. And I provided you, I know that you got it by email, but I also provided the proposal for you to look at and so these packages are our current packages that are available to all of our clients, all new clients, of course. And they all have different products. Some have more, some have less, because it depends on the search that they're looking for, the position that they're looking for. So the one that is comparable to what you currently have is our basic plus package. That one would be for office personnel, administrative drivers. And also for key positions or executive positions. We have other products that you could add just to make sure, as Mr. Lada mentioned, we do education references. We do personal references. Personal references as well. Any type of reference, we can also put together anything else that you might need for the executive positions. We also provide drug screening as well. We work with several companies, so it's easily accessible to the candidate. It won't be a problem for them to travel very far. And basically, it's a very simple process. As far as getting on board with us, there is no monthly fee. It's basically pay as you use. I imagine that you're probably doing that with Checker as well. So basically, it's an agreement that we have and the signed proposal, letting me know what products that you need. And I know that you're going to be reviewing that and letting me know. Mr. Lada will be in touch with me and I'll be in touch with him. And he'll let me know exactly what you're looking for. And we can even put together a package for you if you wish. And I've got all the prices right now available to you, as you probably saw in your email and what I have provided for you as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You have any questions? Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Just wanted to ask if we did our own search here, criminal search on our hires. Perhaps Chief can answer that.
Okay, questions being directed to our police chief, Onahara?
Mr. Sellers, just a little clarification. Is that for?
For the city administrator or, or anybody that we hire? You don't do any background on them?
No, sir, we've never been asked to conduct background on any civilian employees, just for the police department and dispatch.
Remember I brought that up.
All right. So am I to understand that we're, this discussion of possible action, city administrator vacancy update? What exactly Frank are we asking a motion for? This is a little confusing to me.
I believe we're asking for a motion tonight.
It's discussion and possible action.
I think they title that into all the captions, but I don't think they're asking for.
It was the reason why you put possible action, because if you guys directed me anything on the vacancy, if you wanted to change something and you wanted an action that was documented.
All right, thank you.
We gave you the flexibility.
So you have, I would recommend to the council that standard practice for the amount of money, it's very minimal. That you go with the ultimate package, drug promotion pricing. You do the, verify the social security number, verify employment for $8.80. Employment credit report for $8.80. Do a straight estate driving history as well, $4.40. A social media search is very important. You can get an idea of what kind of person, as you well know, social media presence is very prevalent now. And so it's, it's incumbent upon you to understand what kind of candidate mindset you have that you're bringing in. There may be some stuff on a social media site that may not agree with you. And that may not be the type of individual you want to bring into our city to convey to the community. So those are all very important things that most, if not all corporations will do. Cities are now doing that. So you're looking at 58 plus another six. Well, it's 22, so you're looking a little under 200 bucks, right? What is it?
Oh, yes, sir.
What's that, if you wanted to do everything, 5808, let me pull out the calculator. I'll just do flat numbers. So you do 58 and you do $6, $6.40, but nevertheless, 64, $8 for the verification of employment. Employment credit report, another $8. That's $80. $4.40, save five bucks, four bucks. It's 84 and then $22 for the social site. You're looking at $106. Probably about 115 when it's all said and done. Give or take those other few sets. But that is a very minimal investment to secure yourself a pretty screened candidate. That you can assure yourself that you're picking up somebody that's been screened pretty good. Mr. Sellers?
I just want to say I concur with you.
Okay. Mr. Burton?
Are, are we asking to do all 10 candidates in advance or are we going to?
Just the ones you select.
Are we going to cull them down to?
Yeah, and once you select your candidates, the ones that you want to call in for the interview, once you do your interview and then you select your candidate, you have a choice to do it prior and spend the 108, which is, let's just say you narrowed down to eight. And you're looking at $800 roughly plus. Okay? Can that answer your question? Okay. Councilman Science, Councilman Valverde?
I know, I know Checker's been mentioned a couple of times. Is that a service we've been using?
We've never used one.
Yes, sir. So like, like the chief said, he'll, he'll handle dispatchers and police. And I think there's, at one point I understood that they can do that, but they, they can't do every, they shouldn't be doing everybody else. And so we started using various people, we're with Checker now. And so we'll do the administrative and the fire department. But for, you know, city administrators, it's typically, has been done elsewhere.
Mr. Lada, how do you feel about this firm? In terms of somebody we can use to depend on?
Right, I mean, I think this, I think this is a good opportunity to try them out. Again, like she said, it's menu pricing, we can sign it, you can decide. You don't have to decide today what you want. Along the way, you can decide, hey, we want this, when and where. So I mean, again, we don't get charged until we actually use the service.
That's absolutely right. There are no monthly fees, there's no startup fee. We can take one of the packages and we can add the optional items and have them, or we can have everything optional if you like. And depending on the position, you can just click on what you need to search for that particular person, for that particular position.
So that's why, it's a good opportunity, it's flexible, it's, y'all can decide what y'all. And then, and then when you get the results, you can decide whether you, you liked it.
Another option for the council to consider is on January 13th, you'll receive those applications. Just pick one. Pick one and run them. And then you will see what you get back. So as a template to understand, probably a strong candidate you might want to look at. And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Messick, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the, the only question that I would ask is how long does a typical background check if we were to use you?
It usually is pretty quick, a day or two. Sometimes the counties take a little bit longer. We're kind of at their mercy when we're looking, when somebody has a, what we call a hit in the county. So we have to do some really in-depth investigation and we rely on them to do it. So sometimes it'll take them a little bit longer.
Oh, you could do that too, as another idea is on the day that you, you know, one of us select. Doesn't matter who it is, just somebody strong that you might be considering. Pick that person, run it and then see what comes back. You understand the template of a full run. Now you decide, menu it. I don't think we need this, we can do this. And you can make decisions at that point. That's another option. But for the cost, it's very minimal, very minimal. Mr. Burton?
I'd, I'd like to move to make a motion.
Okay, so you move for a motion to do what?
Hire San Antonio Retail Merchants Association to serve as our screening for our candidate of city administrator, package to be determined.
Okay, package to be determined. Good, good motion. Okay, do we have a second to Councilman Burton's motion?
Our second.
Second, my Councilman Sellers? Okay, let's call for the vote now. You want to have any more?
Yeah, just a little.
Go ahead.
A little bit of practice that we've not doing background checks on, on everybody, including us up here. Is this something that we should start doing? Especially because of everything that we're involved with. I, I think it'd be, it should be inclusive, maybe not at this point, but moving forward, I think it'd be beneficial in an effort to maintain transparency, which is what we're looking for, that everybody do, including us.
I think that would be, correct me if I'm wrong Frank, that would be somewhat unconstitutional against the election law, wouldn't it? Because if a person wants to run for office, he wins, he's won at the will of the people. And he has to sign that he's not been convicted or had it resolved prior to being elected to council on the sheet for the candidacy. And so, in other words, it's, there's language in the sheet of the candidacy that says. So what Mr. Lasseo is saying is subject every single council member that gets elected and a mayor to a background check, which I think is just, you know, not a very good thing to do. So I just, I don't think it's good, it's for employees, Mr. Lasseo. Basically what we're looking at.
The motion, the motion that I, the motion that I heard was specifically for the city administrator applicants.
Yeah.
And that's been seconded. The comment by Councilman Lasseo was, he was looking to see positive about expanding the criminal background checks for more than just the city administrator applicants. I mean, that's a comment that, that's.
You want to elaborate?
I mean, that was the, that was the comment that he made. However, the motion is still for the limitation of the city administrator.
Correct.
Position.
Yeah, and that stands still. I just want to clarify, did you mean council members and?
Yes.
Mayors and all?
Yes.
Okay, so.
There's, it is not a state requirement.
Yeah.
To have background checks on elected officials. The only requirement is that elected officials who run for office in Texas cannot be convicted of a felony.
Correct.
There's no requirement for background checks, that would have to be something that's done locally. However, there's attorney general opinions that a city cannot add a requirement to run for office that's not required by state law.
So basically, these background checks are to make sure that employees that we hire are subject to the background because they're going to be working for us. I, I see your point. So we have a motion on the table. And we have a second to it. So let's go ahead and call for the vote. Okay, Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lasseo?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a 5-0 decision. You're on board with Sarma? So we're, thank you so much. We look forward to working with you on whatever menu the council decides.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening and Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I know we already closed on that, but I'd like, I'd like to comment. I know that, that one's already gone forward, but in a, in a sense of transparency, the way we've been talking about being transparent, I think it's imperative that we set the example and move forward. Because if we're going to expect from our employees, we should do the same. Whether the law requires it or not, I think it's a tremendous benefit to our citizens and to our voters and to our constituents to know that we're all willing to take a, a background and just move forward with it. Just my, my, my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Sharon, very much for your comments. So what we're going to do now, ladies and gentlemen, because we have a, a, an attorney with the EDC that's here right now, we're going to move and not go to item number three. I'm going to move item, uh, number three out and move it down. We're going to go into an executive session very quickly to get an update on our, which will be item number. Let's see here. Is it number? 18, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you everyone. So yeah, 18, we're going to move to item 18, go into executive session. We'll try to rush pretty quickly through this, ladies and gentlemen, so that you can come back into the council meeting. And we try not to take too much time. So the time is approximately 7:29, it is 7:29 PM. We will now be moving an executive session to discuss number 18.
We're in recess real quick.
And let me read it just for the record. Discussion pursuant to 551.071 Attorney Consultation Regarding the Limited Partnership Agreement of Crossroads. Regarding the Limited Partnership Agreement of Crossroads Mall Partners LTD. So, um, let's move. Time is, time is eight twelve PM. We have now left the executive session, we are now in open session. Mr. Burton? You have the floor, sir. We're going to item number twenty now, reconvening on an open session.
Nineteen, you mean?
Is it nineteen, and then we go to twenty? Remember we said twenty? Yeah, twenty is afterwards the amount of nineteen.
Okay. I moved to make a motion that we increase in, in rent for the Wonderland of the Americas Mall Senator's Office, A twenty-two to five thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars per month, or sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eight yearly with a three hundred month increase. And the senator will assume the cost of the alarm.
Sixty-five dollars.
By sixty-five dollars, yes.
Per month, okay? Do we have a second to Councilman Burton's motion?
Second.
Councilman Science, second. Any other further discussion? Okay, call for voting, Mr. Valverde?
Yeah.
Mr. Science?
Yeah.
Say that.
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, five oh, motion passes. Now we will move to item number three. Okay, moving to item number three, we finish these. Discussion and possible action, name an interim city administrator, Councilman Science, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So as everyone is aware that, uh, Mr. Lara will be leaving his, uh, current position as interim city administrator effective January third, twenty twenty-five. So I would suggest that we name a, another interim city administrator until we're able to complete the process of interviewing and selecting a full-time candidate or permanent candidate. I included the resumes for two highly qualified individuals, uh, fire chief, Thomas Marakine, and the finance director Floyd Messick, um, for your review, and then we can identify either one, if any, to appoint to that interim city administrator position.
Thank you, Councilman Science. So do we have any input on that from any of the council members? Uh, in terms of, of anything, but before that, I think we had Councilman, a former Councilman Charles White wanted to speak on item number three. Anybody have any objections to doing that now?
I think if he signed up, he has the right.
Yeah, he signed up.
Greetings, Council. Uh, I looked at the, uh, everything online, and, uh, of your choices, I believe Floyd Messick would be the best person, candidate for the position. My only concern is that if you get it, and we hire a city administrator, you're not going to leave like Mr. Laura is, are you? I hope not. Will you, are you still going to maintain your regular position, or do you have a, a second that can keep things going?
An answer, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it would be, it should show, should it be chosen, it would be split duty, yes, sir.
Are you comfortable? Okay, thank you, Council.
Any input from any council members?
Question?
Councilman Burton?
During this interim period, does he get a hiking salary?
Mr. Lada?
That's your house purview, that's not mine.
I don't think that was anything that was in supporting documentation for it, so.
That's why I asked the question.
Whatever you guys think.
Yeah, there was no offer or anything like that of additional, yeah, it's just four to six weeks.
Yeah, pretty much.
Then I moved to make a motion to, uh, if, if he will accept the interim position to, uh, have, um, Mr. Floyd Messick as our interim city administrator.
Motion is on the floor. Do we have a second to that motion?
Is, is, is he, is he willing to do it though? Is he willing?
Uh, yeah.
Our second.
If needed, yes, sir.
Councilman Sellers is second, let's call for further discussion. Have you all considered, um, the chief Marakine, obviously? Anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Me personally, I think that would interfere with the chief's position as a fire chief, would it?
Go ahead, chief.
No, not necessarily. I'd, I'd split duties just like Mr. Messick would.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What was it?
I said, no, it wouldn't necessarily interfere. I, I, I mean, I have captains that help run the shifts.
Okay.
But, uh, I'd split the duties just like Mr. Messick would need to be.
So council's purview is what? You, you have a first motion on it? Second, you want to move forward with a vote or any amendments, anything, nothing? Cool. Can I get Councilman Sellers' second? So we have it on the floor.
I do have a question for, uh, Mr. Garza. So if we named Mr. Messick as a interim city administrator, could we also ask the fire chief to help with any kind of overflow if Mr. Messick is not able to address something?
Yeah, but that's okay, I'll allow, it's okay, chief.
The answer is no. I mean, in the sense that, uh, if you appoint upon, and I'm assuming the motion is to be effective when Mr. Lada is gone. So any assistance he, the interim city administrator would need, he would request for that assistance.
Okay.
Council would not direct.
Yeah.
Him for that assistance.
Keep it tight, anybody, pretty much. Okay, any other questions? So we have the vote on the table. Councilman Valverde, call for the vote. Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lasse?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Mr. Marakine, for at least, you know, trying to help us as well. Appreciate it. I'm sure if he needs anything, he'll give you a buzz. Okay, great. You know where he's at. You could find him. Okay, so now we'll move on to item number four. A discussion possible action to approve the recommended evaluation form for the city administrator. Councilman Valverde, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to share a little background on the city administrator performance evaluation form. Our, our city has been using the same form for many years. And it, it did cover some, but not all the job descriptions. The, uh, the, the city administrator was being evaluated by five council members during the time. And during that time, there were personal conflicts between the administrator and some council members. This was interfering with the, with the city administrator's true and fair performance evaluation. Therefore, I suggested changing the evaluation system to provide the administrator a fair evaluation. My suggestion was to have the mayor evaluate the administrator with the input of the rest of the, uh, the council. And of course, the council approved it. So now the administrator is being evaluated by the mayor with the input from the council members. This way, the mayor can eliminate any nonsense comments or rating scores. For example, a former council member gave a former city administrator nothing but zeros for his score. And made a lot of negative comments due to personal conflicts, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. After our last permanent city administrator left, I suggested making a change to the evaluation form to match the job description. I didn't know, I don't know how you feel about this, but I've always known that a person is evaluated based on the performance of the job description for any position. During the time when I suggested to make the, the evaluation form matches up job description, an interim was hired temporarily, and that person presented some general information on the city administrator's job description and evaluations. The result was that the old evaluation form was replaced with the current one, which you have in your packets, only to be a cut and paste from the city of Austin, Texas. It seems it's always the easy way out instead of creating our own form. I took the liberty to make changes on the old evaluation form format to match the job description for our city administrator. You have a copy in your package of that also, and along with that, you have a job description, and, and it's color-coded. I hope you all had a chance to study it and look, look, and study it, and hopefully tonight we can go over the recommended form so we can decide on a fa- final evaluation form. If you feel the current evaluation form is good, then let's move on.
I think this should be a very easy thing to do, so, um, we have any comments from any council members?
Yeah, I was just going to go over the.
Okay, go right ahead.
Evaluation form.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the job description in your package, like I said, is color-coded to show how it was selected and placed on the evaluation form. Anything highlighted in yellow is in the interpersonnel skills. Green is in the budget, light blue is in the council, purple is in the community. Light gray is in the supervision, and the red, the red highlights is in the control. Dark gray is in the commu- I'm sorry, the, the purple is in the community, and the dark gray is in the communication. And there's a section there under managing, which on your job description is not highlighted, but it's got red fonts. That was supposed to have been in addition. So, let's go, let's go over the, uh, the, the form right quick. There are eight subjects which cover the city, city administrator's job description. Evaluation for, for six subjects are, are from the councils, and two subjects are evaluated by the mayor, or I'm recommending to be evaluated by the mayor. You can see the scores in descending order, number four for outstanding, number one for needs improvement. Now, page one shows the information of the city administrator, the subject headings and score. Page two, um, on this page, you, you'll see the, the mayor's section with two subjects, supervision and control, which is what I'm recommending for the mayor to, uh, evaluate. Supervision and control are the two subjects which I think should be evaluated by the mayor. In my opinion, the mayor and administrator must communicate daily about the status or incidents of the city operations and personnel. This way, the mayor can keep the council members informed, and the council can make the right decisions. On page three, you have the ranking guide for total points of the evaluation. As you can see, the numbers there for outstanding, above standard, standard, and needs improvement. There's also a place for the item number and justification comments for needs, needs improvement or outstanding scores. On page four, you have a place for goal setting from the previous year. And you can, you can sick, show here if it was achieved or not. On page five, it's where you set the goals for the following year, next year. And you can make comments on the overall evaluation of the administrator. And the next section is where the administrator makes his or her comments. And page six shows if the employee is eligible for a step increase, merit step, bonus raise, this evaluation period. Eligibility is only if a standard or higher evaluation has been acquired. This is where the mayor and the, and the administrator signature, signatures are required to file the evaluation, evaluation report. And this concludes the presentation of my suggested evaluation form. If the council decides to go with this, it must be revised to make sure that whatever decisions or changes requested by my colleagues take place. If my colleagues decide to continue using the current evaluation form from Austin, Texas, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Valverde. Yes, Councilman Science, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, Councilman Valverde, I think this is excellent, um, excellent, um, work here and taking leadership in this, so thank you for that. Uh, I do have a couple of notes that I would like to have all council members be responsible for the entire thing, not just the mayor on numbers, uh, seven and eight. I think since we're, we're all interacting with him, I think we should all have some, um, input on those as well. On the goals area, I think we should clarify who is setting those goals. Is the city administrator going to set his goals with? Well, I mean, then he's, he could have potentially thirty goals. So are we going to have, like, the city administrator set his goals with guidance or approval from the city council that he would say, these are the goals I see for the city? And then we would review those and approve or add notes? I would also say that the, the goals should be, um, smart in nature, which is specific, measurable, attainable, reasonable, and timely. So that way, we can have an objective, um, measure, measurement of whether or not he reached those goals. But I, I like this a lot.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you for those comments. Uh, anyone else? Any other comments?
I have a question from Mark. It sounds like you're restricting city administrator in the performance of the job that we hire him to do without approval or permission. Is, is, is that your goal?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Mister? Oh, Mark, no, so, no, what this does is it gives us a, a, an objective way to evaluate the city administrator's performance over the year. So, uh, if we set his goals to increase, say, ad valorem, uh, or sales taxes by five percent, and he increased them by six percent, then he exceeded that goal. He exceeded it by thirteen percent. Whereas if he did not meet that goal, he only raised or helped raise, uh, sales taxes by four percent, then he didn't meet that goal. We could say, no, you only met eighty percent of your goal.
Are you talking about a year-end evaluation?
That, that's what this is, yeah.
Anyone else? Hey, do we have a motion on the floor, since no other comments, uh, from anyone?
Yes, I make a motion to, I make a motion to approve the recommended evaluation from Councilman Valverde.
Okay, and then we have a motion to amend from Councilman Burton, and Councilman Sellers, my main motion.
Well, we, we need a second before we can amend.
Yeah, so.
Because if we don't get a second, then it dies.
Let's get a second for the first.
I'll second, so Mr. Burton can amend.
No, we need a second to.
I'm, I'm seconding, I'm seconding Mr. Sellers.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Mr. Sellers or Burton?
Well, I'm, I'm seconding Mr. Sellers' motion, so that Mr. Burton can offer his amendment.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can go ahead and.
Second on the floor.
Your amendment.
Uh, the amendment would be to include the, the language that, uh, Mr. Science, uh, with the, the, uh, the, the goal.
The smart goals and.
Smart goals.
Yeah. And, uh, number seven and eight being included in the entire council.
Correct.
Okay, we have, uh, we have the main motion, but now we have an amendment to that motion, we have a second to the amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second by Councilman Science on the amendment. We're going to call for the vote on that second one, and then we're going to go back to the first one. Okay, so now we'll call the vote on the second amendment, uh, by Councilman Burton's amendment, second by Councilman Science. Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lasse?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, five oh, motion carries. Now let's go to the original motion.
The main motion as amended.
Motion as stated.
As amended.
By count, as amended.
Correct.
Okay.
All we did was approve the amendment, now we're approving the main motion as amended.
Okay, now, do we have a second to that, which we did mark, is correct?
That's correct.
So we had a second to that amendment, now we'll call for that vote. Okay, uh, do you want to state it for us, Mr. Garza, so that we make sure council understands what they're voting for?
Mr. Garza here.
They're voting for the annual performance evaluation proposed by Council Valverde with the two, uh, proposed changes that were recommended by Councilman Science was that number seven and eight would be uh, also evaluated by the full council and not just the mayor, as well as that the goals that would be established would be established by the council and not individuals.
Okay, so as stated, do we have?
And, and smart in nature.
Yeah, to the smart. So let's go ahead and call for a vote on that. Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lasse?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, five oh, motion carries as well on the second, um, the first. All right, so we got that out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Valverde.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Valverde, very much for your work. Discussion and possible action on number four, to approve the recommended evaluation form for the city. So we've done that just now, and now we're going to number five, correct? Discussion and possible action regarding the national market expert in commercial real estate to assess the current valuation of WODA. Uh, do you anticipate, Mr. Lada, this going too far? We're pretty quick.
I'm pretty sure.
Let's go ahead and move on.
Okay, so basically, good news is so far I have not got anything above fifty thousand, so, so I'm not asking yet to go out for an RFP. I only did get one proposal that actually gave me a price range, and you see it there, thirty to forty-five, but theirs is not filled out yet. Uh, I have two that really are, I'm working with, but it's the holidays. Yeah, we're, it's just very difficult to get them to respond. So all I can tell you is I'll do everything I can before I leave. I'll pass it on to Mr. Messick at that point in time, what, where I'm at. But so far, so good. It looks like it's going to be under the fifty thousand mark. And then, so the hope will be, and I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Messick, is that either on your special January meeting or your council meeting, if we, once we get it pretty much where they got a proposal that they can come and share that with you, and y'all can then pick who y'all want.
On January thirteenth, special meeting?
Thirteenth or there, you can wait till the twenty-seventh, but I'm hoping that we'll have it everything wrapped up by the fifteenth or proposals and that they're still under fifty thousand.
All right, any other questions for Mr.?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Burton?
Oh, let's just say with the fifty thousand dollar what if placeholder fee, where does this money come from? What what fund or where we pull it?
Right.
What fund will be used to pay the consultant or the evaluation, whatever amount it may be?
Right, I'm, I'm using fifty thousand as a placeholder.
Okay.
Mr. Messick has a magic, magic hat. He'll pull the money from.
Go right ahead.
It's a bunny tree.
Right now, if I had to code it, I would put it in general fund under professional services, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
That's what I need to know.
All right, so we don't need to take any action on this at all at this point? Good. You just had it on there as action just in case. Okay, great. Let's move on now to number six, discussion and possible action regarding Jazz Festival twenty twenty-five. Miss Spence?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. If y'all indulge me, I'll do it from here since we have a little presentation. In your, in your packet, you had a couple of spreadsheets that we had, so just a little history on it. This is going to be twenty twenty-five would be the thirty-fourth season of the balconies heights Jazz Festival. On the screen, you've got just the last several years of of the events and the costs that were incurred with those. We have, we have, as we have seen a change in our city with the loss of some of the hotel properties. We've also seen those dollar amounts change as well, too. The beginning balance for fiscal year twenty to twenty-one, we were able to set aside a little over eighty thousand dollars through the hot funds for the Jazz Festival. And we were able to hold four Friday events during that timeframe. As we've seen the changes to our city, those dollar amounts have lessened. And so this last fiscal year, our budget was twenty-five thousand dollars for us to produce the Jazz Festival and also to have the Hispanic Trails, the sponsorship that the city provides for them as well, too. Cost wise, I mean, it takes us pretty much that amount to produce one, one event. You notice we went down from having three, you know, four Fridays, we went down to three, we've gone to two. And then this last year, it was just the one Friday that we had. Services are costing more, each of the the vendors that we have to come in to assist us with the event. Those, we're seeing the rising cost from them as well, too. So a twenty-five thousand dollar budget is pretty much one event is what we've got that we can produce. And twenty-five thousand is not the entire cost of this event. We partner with Wonderland of the Americas and also iHeart Media. You'll notice on here, there's no advertising dollars that are part of of the budget that we have. It's because iHeart Media picks up most of that as well, too. And they title sponsor for the event helps to cover those costs. We don't see any of those monies coming in, but we also don't have any expense going out for those as well, too. Word of mouth has helped us tremendously. When you've got an event for thirty plus years, you've done a really good job of being able to promote the product that you have. So twenty-five thousand seems like a lot of money, but it is really just one event that we're able to produce with that. And then there's your breakdown of what that twenty-five thousand covers for us there. Okay, so as we're going into twenty twenty-five, we are again constrained by what dollars are available to us. We are predicting that our hot fund revenues are going to be right at two hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year. Having that, the hot fund laws stipulate that only up to fifteen percent of your anticipated revenues can be shared or can be spent on arts. Live music is considered art. And so if we take that fifteen percent, we're looking at a thirty thousand dollar amount that we can spend on the arts for this fiscal year. If we take the four thousand right off the top that we're going to use to sponsor the Hispanic Trails, now we're back down to our twenty-six. And so we're basically the same place that we were this last year as well, too. So as we've had some conversations, we've talked a little bit individually about not just doing jazz music. Maybe kind of looking at bringing in some different type of music and make this now just a music festival and not necessarily a jazz festival. So a couple of options for y'all to consider, and we are going to be looking at dates as well. But we can, we know we can produce the one Friday event in July for the budget that we have. We would keep it exactly as we've done in the past, two entertainers on the Friday evening. We have a fairly known opener, could be somebody local from Texas, and then we bring in a headliner that is an international star as well, too. That it it's nice having that caliber of an artist come. It does, again, give the city of Balcony sites a lot of recognition, but they are costly. You know, there's, there's travel that's involved as well, too. There's hotel stays, things along that line. So we could use those funds differently if we wanted to. So the one day event, we can still do the same thing. You're looking at a cost there total about twenty-nine thousand dollars for that for a one day event. All of the costs that you see here are estimates, but they are dollars that we've talked with the vendors to get an idea of what the potential cost could be for this coming year. Option two gives us a chance to make a few changes to the lineup and maybe even increase the the days that we have to do a Friday and a Saturday event. The added cost by having it on a Saturday as well, too, is just your extra personnel that you're going to have for your sound. Your, your folks are going to be there, our police department, you know, it's more staff that we're going to need as well, too. But you can offset what those costs are going to be by changing the talent that you're going to bring in. And again, we focus on local, so we could keep the Friday night as the jazz as we've had it for all of these years, and we know it works well. And then on Saturday, we could begin, say, two o'clock in the afternoon, and we reach out to our local high schools, the local groups, the jazz clubs that are in the city. And we get some really, really good local talent to come in and perform at two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock. And then at six o'clock, we bring in another local Texas band, Texas group, Texas singer, and then finish out the evening that way. So we, we are still using the same amount of dollars, but we're expanding the kind of music that we are showcasing. And this would give us the opportunity to add a variety of music and not keep it just to the jazz, if you would want to do that. Again, you've got a lot of great history with it as a jazz festival. We've had some amazing performers come in over the years. It draws a crowd. We, you know, we can, we'll see somewhere between three and four thousand people at Wonderland on a Friday evening. The amphitheater gets full, lots of folks are coming out, they're setting their blankets and lawn chairs out the Monday before the event. So they're anticipating that they're going to have a, a great show as well, too. But we do have some options as well. And then for a, a date, this year, the Fourth of July is on a Friday. So our recommendation to council would be to host the event on Friday, the eighteenth, which would be the third Friday of the month. We don't want to do it that next weekend after. A lot of folks are still having Fourth of July activities as well, too. So we would want, would recommend the eighteenth for the event or possibly the eighteenth, nineteenth, if you're interested in making a change to the festival. Now entertain, any questions?
Questions for Miss Spence?
Is Sid, is Sid still kicking in his electricity and all the?
Yes, sir. So Wonderland takes care of the hotel for the artists that are coming in. They also do some of the marketing as well, too, to help cover some of the costs there, and they also cover our security. They take care of all the police officers.
How much money is that? Do we know? Do we know how much money that it amounts to?
I don't have their dollars, no, sir.
Have we ever had that information?
No, sir.
Cost, what he's putting in compared to what we're putting in?
No, sir.
Any other questions? You still have the form?
What other type of act besides jazz are you, are you thinking?
And we can open this up really to just about any kind of music that you would want to. If you want to look at a two day event and make it a music festival and not just a jazz festival. I would still recommend keeping jazz on the Friday evening, even just for the headliner, not so much. You can still do a local group. The last two years, we have brought in unique groups here from San Antonio. One was the cover band for, for Chicago. So definitely not jazz, but great music as well, too. We had Nina and the Gypsies come in this last year as well, too. So our opening act has already, we've already kind of made a, a change into the type of music that's there and then went with the jazz artists on the Friday night. The Saturday gives you an opportunity to do either a little rock band, you could do some country, you can even do a Tejano group if you wanted to. You know, you could, the opportunity here is to really look at it as a music festival and not just as, as a jazz festival.
That's, that's kind of what I've suggested for many years. What about any type of return on this investment?
We, we have thirty-four years of great publicity for the city of Balcony Heights.
I want some money. I want, I want, I want dollars, not publicity.
In order to secure the facility, we would spend as much as we are spending to be able to produce the event. Wonderland is such an open space. There are so many entrances to this space. In order to enclose it, you would spend almost as much money to enclose the space and ticket it. And then we, we are not able to add any more to the space currently. If we stay at the amphitheater, I can only put so many bodies there. It's only so big. So other than moving it to a different venue, then you, you have the opportunity to expand the attendance for it. And again, then more costs are incurred at the same time as well, too.
It, it's, it's right. I think it's too, too late to, to do what I was thinking, like I had sat down with you before and say, move it to the backside of the mall and make it a, an event where we could try and generate some return on this investment. But I know Dave with Acadiana is, is no longer. Do we get, do we get any service, any of the food vendors permits? Do we get paid? Do we get a cut of their profits?
No, sir. So we do not, the city does not handle the permits for those. The Mr. Munoz with iHeart Media is the one that handles getting everything there. The city has waived the fee for those vendors over the last several years.
But we don't give a slice of the pie.
No, sir. It is truly a community event.
Right, well, we're, we're, we're in tough times right now. We're talking Hillcrest, we're talking servicing a debt on a mall. We're just put that stuff in perspective. I, I'd like to see some type of, we, out of the kindness of our heart, Miss Slay, you know, made the, the shortfall in Hispanic Trails. Thank you, Madeline. Uh, so, you know, I, I, I just like to see some money coming back, if just a little bit, something.
All right, let's move right along on this. I think we've heard good input there. Anybody else have any input? Miss Spence, what would you like for the council to take action and have an action item on there? Preferably, I think you're leaving in January, correct?
Yes, sir.
So who's going to be in charge of this? Leave. Do we have to select somebody, get somebody to do this for us?
Yes, sir. Yeah, whoever will succeed me will be, yeah, we'll, we'll have to do this one, yes, yeah. The only recommendation I would be to, to set July eighteenth as the date to hold the, the festival. We typically begin planning in early January for this event. And so it'll be time to get together with, with iHeart Media and with Wonderland to start putting everything into place. And the date's important so that we can begin looking for talent.
Council, she's looking for a motion or at least some direction from us to make a decision. Just to give her, just set July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five is the date for the actual Jazz Fest or the Music Fest. And so that's what she's looking for right now. Do we have a motion entertaining from anyone?
First, I'd like to ask Miss Spence something.
Sure.
So we can set the date, but what is, when do we need to have the type of event set? So one day or two day kind of event, when would you or your successor need that guidance?
We would need to have those details by the end of February.
Okay, so could we direct the city administrator, current and future interim or whatever, to start putting together that information for us? What types of bands could we get to expect to get and all that? For the next regular city council meeting so we can?
That shouldn't be a problem. We'll add it to the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to make a motion to set the Jazz Fest twenty twenty-five to July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. Councilman Sines made a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, possible eighteenth and nineteenth.
Possible eighteenth or nineteenth? Is that, is that okay, Miss Spence? Motion is for eighteenth or nineteenth, is that okay?
Well, eighteenth and possibly the nineteenth, if we choose to do this, the two day event.
Okay, to make the decision to make the two.
Right.
Okay, so you want to read?
Yeah, the, yeah, the motion would be to set the dates for the twenty twenty-five Jazz Fest to July eighteenth and possibly July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second to councilman motion?
Second.
Second, LaSia. Let's call for a vote. Councilman Valverde?
Hey.
Councilman Sines?
Yeah.
Councilman LaSia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Five oh, motion carries for July eighteenth and nineteenth, possible dates. Okay, now let's move on to the next item. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Seven, discussion and actions adopt a resolution, this should go very quickly, accepting the community development block grant program and income intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Bear County for the Crestview Drive Reconstruction Project. Does, Mr. Lada, you just need to make a quick little presentation?
Oh, just basically, just to let you know, this is, this is what we've done all these previous years. Nothing's new. This is the actual agreement with Bear County, so they need y'all's resolution so that we can forward it to them.
Get it done.
Right, correct.
Do we have a motion on the floor or on the table?
So move.
So move, Councilman Valverde.
Second.
Councilman Sines, let's call for the vote. Councilman Valverde?
Aye.
Councilman Sines?
Yeah.
Councilman, uh, LaSia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passed, five oh. Moving down the line. Hey, discussion and action, possible action regarding code compliance accountability, item number eight. Councilman Sellers and Mr. Lada on this issue?
Yeah, I I had a speech ready until I found out that our city administrator relieved our code compliance lady of her duties. She is no longer with us. But I do want to point out that one of our councilmen brought to the attention of code compliance personnel, some vehicles that were parked on the street inoperable months and months ago. Those vehicles are still there. And several months back, Councilman LaSia contacted city administrator concerning trees, branches and the power lines. And I have some pictures that if you'll just run through them, you don't have to focus on any one of them. I was reading the codes on landscaping for the residents and it stated that the residents are responsible for the trees, but it did not specify if they're responsible for the power lines or the, or the lines going to their meter on their house. This is, this is an issue that should be addressed as Councilman Burton can attest to can be extremely dangerous. If one of those lines break and rip your power out of your house, okay? He was very fortunate, his house didn't burn down. So it, it it still has not been addressed. I mean, are we going to call CPS and have them take care of it? Are we gonna do the homeowner's notification to take care of it? City administrator also put out a notice a while back about getting back to our beautification awards that we used to have years and years and years ago. But we can't do that if we don't have a code compliance personnel that will go out there and write violations. Or people not edging their sidewalks and blowing grass on the streets, not cleaning their fences out. Years ago, people had proud pride in upheating, upheating their yards for that beautification award, if nothing else. And the, the codes have gone slack, the people have gone slack. I wanted to ask our code lady, how many warnings has she put out? How many citations has she put out? And I, I find out that she was never qualified to issue a citation. Why she was ever hired, I don't know. But that's over thirty thousand dollars that just went out the door or nothing. There is a applicant on board that is requesting code compliance and I'll let Albert take over if you want to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Go ahead, Mr. Lada.
Now just quickly address some of the issues as well. As far as the trees and the power lines, on the primary lines, CPS is responsible for those lines. They normally do their vegetation maintenance on a cycle basis. We can call them and ask them to come in into our city. Usually, it depends on where they are in their cycles. I'll try before I leave to try to contact them over there, since I know who the individual that oversees that. Hopefully he's not on vacation. See if they can pull some resources in here. So they'll come in and they'll patrol the lines, they'll identify and they'll try to trim those trees. As far as the trees between the actual primary, which is usually the lines along the street. Sometimes they do run in the backyards, but they run actually to the house, to the meter. That's the responsibility of the homeowner. And so we just need to educate the homeowner, give them the phone number to CPS to call before they actually do their tree trimming. So they ensure that CPS will come out and kill that line to their meter so that they can go ahead and cut those branches and not be exposed to electrocution. So I'll, I'll work with Mr. Messick and, and also the community development manager to try to get that process and notification put out as we see those in our patrols. And, and as Councilman Sellers says, we do have a candidate in the city of San Antonio. He's a fully qualified control officer, code compliance officer. And he's willing to come here. However, he will only come in as, as a full time. Currently, our position is part time, but one thing we can do is, two things to address some issues. One, to, to, you know, we convert the part time over to another position that we currently have vacant right now, which is basically in the municipal court area. So that way, again, we're not adding to our body count. So the body count would remain the same. It would just be moving the full time over to the code officer. Secondly, since he is knowing what he's doing, we expect him to quickly get everything. Hopefully then, you know, up to speed, he can issue citations, bring people to court, just like the previous one did that we had that was qualified, who, who could do that. This person, like I said, he's already qualified, so he can bring cases to court. However, he's not going to just be a code officer, because just like the previous one, we expect them to do additional work as necessary, such as, one of the things, if we get development going on in this city, we really need another, somebody from the city to go out and look at those construction sites to make sure that everything's being done correctly, this individual. Because he's code, should be able to go, one, make sure codes are all being followed, but at the initial, to make sure if there's anything like dirt in the streets or anything like that, you know, get ahead of the residents before they call us, get with the contractors and stuff like that. So we would use him as kind of like a, again, like a construction inspector, although he's not going to be inspecting construction, but the construction site. So that's one of the things that he would do. Obviously, if he's in the office, he'll take payments, he'll answer phone calls. He'll answer anybody who comes to the front, whether it's regardless of what type of work it is related to permitting. We expect that. That's what the previous person did. So he would do that as well if he's the person in the office. And then thirdly, I would recommend to the community development manager that he also get his animal control background, go to class, take his test. I don't see any reason why he can't pass that. So that way he can assist that department to have a second person that's animal control qualified. So that way they, and again, he can issue citations. So if he finds a dog with the PW guy, they can go to the owner and tell him, hey, your dog's loose, here's your citation. So, so with y'all's approval, I, I would like to bring this guy. He won't come if it's part time. But he is, you know, city of San Antonio code certified.
You have the, you have the authority under city administrator. It's not a council. Thanks for the FYI, but it's basically within your purview and your powers of your administration. Mr. Councilman Sellers, what would you like to see with your motion? It was an action item. Do you have a particular motion you would like to make on your action item or anything?
No, I do not.
Okay.
But I would like to add something.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Albert and I talked about this new applicant before. I, I explained to him that we do not have the funds to hire a full time code compliance only guy. There's just not enough and three thousand people out there. But he's got to wear two hats. So he has come across with that. And as long as this code guy can wear two hats and I'm on board with it.
Great. Then he mentioned he's got that position in the municipal court that's open that he can utilize to fund. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia?
Yeah, just on, on the thought process, I'd like to see it advertised, just, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the thought process of going with somebody that came, came to us. I think I'd, I'd like to see it advertised and go, go through the motion.
Well, we actually went to him.
Was that?
We went to him.
And, and that, that's part of my, my concern. I think we, for transparency's sake, I think we should open it up and allow for, for the
Well, we'll do that, but please understand we've done it before and
Right, right, and
We applied. That's why we got who we had.
Right. And then, I mean, just for transparency's sake, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Councilman Lysia. Anyone else?
The only other thing, I'm sorry. Do I go first?
Yeah, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, I think I've discussed with Mr. Laura, not only the, what Councilman Sellers is addressing, but the, I was worried about this was when I was on council before, when we got to talking about privacy fences and compartmentalizing people's property out of sight, out of mind. And the ditch between Vivian and, and Leisure, you know, the, the homeowners have pools back there. They got, they put up many accessory buildings, which probably haven't been permitted. They just throw them up and they, we don't see them. But the, the ditch is just covered like an archway back there. And they're supposed to take care of that. PPS or saws or nobody's, that's, that's the owner's property. They're supposed to take care of that, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Burton, staying on point. So we don't have any action item on this. Thank you very much, Mr. Lada. Thank you, Mr. Sellers, for bringing this to our attention. Let's move on now to item number nine. Discussion and action to consider the application received from Roger Enriquez for the EDC Board Director nominee to serve on the EDC Board for a term of December twenty twenty-four through June twenty twenty-six. We have former Councilman Charlie White signed up to speak on this number nine.
Yes, Council. Roger Iniquis, how do you pronounce his last name?
Enriquez.
Enriquez. Very impressive resume. Actually, if I was y'all, I'd be looking at him for a city administrator. Very impressive. I believe somewhere in there he worked supervisor a hundred people. Of course, I don't, I didn't see anything as far as city politics go. But all commissions pretty much run the same. You know, the AMA, all these other groups, everything has a format that follows state law as far as, uh, but anyway, I think he'd be an excellent candidate. But I, I think you ought to recommend him for maybe city manager, city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, former Councilman White. We didn't have anybody else on that, so council discussion on this. Any questions, Mr. Enriquez? Please feel free to come up and address the, the professor.
Well, I'm, I'm very thankful for the, for the comments about my resume. Tenured professor at the University of Texas at San Antonio, very happy in that position. And obviously, I see the enormous potential for a community like Balcony Heights. For probably the last, at least eight to ten years, I've been working with very, what, what we like to call place-based initiatives on the west side, on different parts of San Antonio. I, I think Balcony Heights is really on the precipice of doing really wonderful things. Just, uh, so I, and my kids perform at the Wonder Theater and, and, and that's sort of the way that I got interested in what was happening with that property and whatnot. So just really looking forward to collaborating with the council and the mayor and the small business owners and whatnot on trying to find a trajectory for the city to, to, to really make it for all, for everybody to share in the upside.
Great, thank you. And just for the record, I mean, you basically, I think you mentioned you saw an article in the San Antonio Business Journal of what we're doing and all that, and you reached out to me. And then when I Oh, yeah. You didn't reach out to me, but you saw me there. Yeah, then you reached out later. Yeah. Which one was it? The, the Hispanic Trails? The Hispanic Trails? Oh, wow, okay. Oh, yeah, okay. We probably had something going on. Anybody have any questions that you'd like to ask Mr. Enriquez on his resume and qualifications and desire to serve?
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
So no, no questions for Mr. Enriquez. His resume speaks for itself. I would, I, I would move to make a motion to approve his nomination for the EDC Board.
Thank you, Mr. Science.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Did you say second? Councilman Burton is second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote. Councilman Valverde.
Aye.
Councilman Science.
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia.
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers.
Aye.
Councilman Burton. Congratulations, Mr. Professor Enriquez. We hope that you can really add some benefit to our EDC. And we look forward to working with you. And right next to you, right here, to your right, is a very esteemed and long-term member on the council, EDC. And she's been in everything. She's helped the city tremendously. Yeah. Madeline Slay. So, okay, well, great. Let's go ahead and move along. Discussion and action to consider application received from Suzanne De Leon to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of December twenty twenty-four through June twenty twenty-six. Mr. Lada, and I think we have somebody on this? Yes, you have ten, eleven and twelve, thirteen, okay. The Councilman White, former Councilman Charles White, again. You're active today, sir.
I have a letter here. I'll give this letter to you after I'm done. It was passed on to me by a citizen and it was passed on to him. And he asked that it be read during this part of the council meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of our community, today we convene to, to discuss a critical matter, the future direction of our city and individuals we entrust with shaping that future through the Planning and Zoning Committee. This committee is more than a review board for zoning applications. It is the foundation of our city's growth, functionality, character. Its decisions influence every resident, business, homeowner, small enterprise, striving to, to thrive in our community. The work of the Planning and Zoning Committee is vital, but is also complex. Members must balance the needs of the residents with the realities of economic development, ensuring our city remains both livable and prosperous. It is not a role for titles or legacies. It demands proven expertise, dedication and unwavering commitment to fairness and progress. In recent years, our city has faced challenges, particularly from our local businesses. Outdated codes and selective enforcement have hindered growth and created an uneven playing field. For example, businesses have struggled with visibility, restrictions, marketing limitations, which, which strife their ability to contribute to our local economy. Thankfully, efforts like the repeal, repeal of the restrictive color codes have been victorious for our small business communities. Evidence of what we can achieve when leadership is focused on fostering local success. Unfortunately, some decisions from past administrations have left lasting consequences, including financial challenges stemming from questionable expenditures and policies that deny prioritize the investments of the interests of local businesses. It is crucial that we learn from these experiences and move forward with a fresh perspective, one that champions fairness, transparency and prosperity for all of our residents. This is why the selection of the new Planning and Zoning Committee member is so important. We must prioritize individuals who demonstrate a deep understanding of zoning principles, a commitment to fostering local businesses and an unwavering dedication to serving the community as a whole without bias or influence from special interest. The decisions made by this committee will shape our city for decades. We owe it to our residents, businesses to ensure that these entrusted with the responsibilities are motivated by the common good and not personal or political agendas. Let us remember, this is not just about who fills the seat at the table. It is about who will guide our city's growth, responsibility and equitability. Together, we can build a community that values fairness, innovation and opportunity for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman White. Council, any input?
If I may?
Yes.
Mayor De Leon is an excellent person for this position, although I'd like to throw my hat in the ring. Eight years on council, served on all the boards at one time. I just thought I'd offer that up for y'all to consider. Thank you.
Lada, is there any more positions in the EDC, I mean, on the?
If, if this was posted in the newsletter, I didn't see it.
No, this vacancy has been there for a while.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
So we had only one vacancy?
Correct, we currently have one.
We have no other vacancies?
We have no other vacancies.
So did Mr. De Leon, I'm, I'm a little confused. Somebody help me. How was, she just volunteered and?
Correct. Anybody, they have to fill out an application, turn it in to us and we bring it to you.
Next time you have an interest, you know, just bring your application forth and ask to see if there's an opening on the board and then submit your application. That's like Mr. De Leon, what she did. And then, so you were asking if you would be considered in lieu of or in competition to another candidate. The only problem with that is we don't have an application on board. We can't do anything about that. But we applaud you for at least wanting to serve. So perhaps you may want to consider Board of Adjustments or somewhere else like that, there may be openings. And, you know, talk to council, come before us, put your application in and then be considered. Okay? Great. So do we have any more comments?
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir, Councilman Science.
No, Mr. White, I was going to thank you for your willingness to serve. However, we do need that application on file before we can consider it. I would echo the mayor's sentiments that we do have openings on the Board of Adjustments that need to be filled by concerned citizens. So if, if, if you're wanting to need to be filled by concerned citizens. So if you're if you're wanting to volunteer and serve our city, that'd be an excellent uh, place for you, sir. I do want to note that um, Mayor Meritas, uh, Duke De Leon would be an excellent addition to the Planning and Zoning Committee. She has years of experience in leadership qualities that would be um, very valuable to this this team.
Okay, um, and so anything else, like other boards, the Economic Development Corporation? We've had a problem with getting forms as well. Um, due to different reasons, everybody has things to do. So uh, alternate, maybe, something like that. Check with Mr. Lada or Miss Miss Merlo, because Mr. Lada will be leaving real soon. So just check, inquire if you have an interest. And again, like um, uh, we've all said, just put your app in and let it be considered. Yes. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead. No problem. You don't mind?
Yeah, after.
Madeline Slate, uh, to what you conquered, one, four, three, all get one, two, three, all get. Now, can't get rid of me. Uh, I just wanted to say, my biggest concern with bringing a letter like former Councilman White brought up was that it sounds like it was passed through two different people, and the person who wrote it was not willing to come up here and read it himself or herself. So that concerns me. Um, the other thing is if you look at, I'm just gonna bring this into kind of a big, big, big picture thing. The concerns brought up in the letter about uh, what's best and what's fair. Uh, we've had some people say, well, you know, we don't even want zoning codes. I'm like, okay, that's great. I'm gonna make my office into a brothel. Well, you can't do that because there's zoning codes. I said, exactly. And you can put a pig farm. And the reason why is because we are a civilized community that has zoning codes that protects everyone's property values, et cetera, from crazy stuff happening. So I can respect the sentiment of the letter that was read by this person that we don't know who it is, but I think it's a little bit short sighted in that uh, when we're really talking about a community and fairness, we have to talk about everybody. I am a business owner in this city, and I live here in this city. And um, so you know, I got both going on. And um, anything that we've done on planning and zoning, I was planning zoning for a long time, uh, has been for the good of the city, not restrictive, only restrictive in that we don't want chaos. So that's all to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Slate, Madeline Slate. Um, Mayor, um, excuse me, Susanna, would you like to have a couple of words? In reference to your appointment and?
Sure, yes.
Like to put some input into your?
Thank you, yes. I've served this city for twenty years, very proud of the service that I have given to this city. As you notice, I keep coming back to meetings because I'm, I still care about this city. I'm in a different position now, and I think that I would be a good asset to the planning and zoning. And I'm hoping that we have some other people come on the Board of Adjustments. I know that that is a very important board as well. So I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just earlier, the the comments that were given to Mr. White about apply for positions, and that that pertains to the general public. We, I'm hoping we can have our applications posted online. If not, we'll give you the directions to anybody and everybody that's willing to come up and help our city thrive. That's that's what we're looking for, for inclusive lists of everybody. Thank you.
Good point, Councilman Lacer. Any other points? Anybody?
Oh.
Any other comments?
I I I'm I'm just curious, um, uh, you know, when when I was running for council and I was, uh, I got beat by the, my opponent. You know, they would, they would put these things in the newsletter and and stress them, you know, we're looking for appointments, we're looking for this, we're looking for that. And uh, you know, that that hasn't been done lately. I know this last newsletter that came out, I didn't see any any appointments.
I I think two, I think it's it's been on two, two months ago. It's it's been regular.
But it should be constant. As long as we got positions open, it should be in there. Just FYI.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Lacer, if you want to.
Just just said that it is posted on on time of the time, spacing available and all that other stuff. But yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments? So let's go ahead and call for a vote on this. Uh, Mr. Bellverde, did you have a comment?
We haven't made a motion yet.
No, I was just asking, you want to make a comment or anything right now?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so let's entertain a motion to appoint Suzanne De Leon to the P N Z. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Valverde has made the motion. Do we have a second to Councilman Valverde?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second to that motion. Let's go ahead and call for the vote. Councilman Valverde? Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lacer?
Yay.
Uh, Councilman Burton?
I'll be the next, sir.
Okay.
Okay, and then um, Councilman Sellers uh, did not want to vote. Well, he indicated to me he doesn't want to vote. So that's two, so that's three.
Three one. It's a three to one vote.
Three one.
Yeah, because he says he doesn't want to.
Well, he's absent, so he.
Okay, all right. Okay, three, one. Vote, motion carries. Okay. Uh, we'll move on down number eleven. Let's hope we can go through these pretty quickly. It's already getting me nine fifteen, nine sixteen, seventeen. So discuss and action update the Code of Ethics, Council Relations Policy. Councilman Science, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So the purpose behind this is that the the agenda items should be submitted by council or mayor within five business days prior to the meeting. However, there have been, there's been an instance where an an item that was submitted in a timely manner was removed by the mayor, and I do not think that was uh the right thing to do or should be allowed. If the council member has something that he feels is important for the public to either hear or discuss or be brought to their attention, then the mayor should not have the power to just remove it at his at his own will. So I recommend that we update the city Code of Ethics, um, subchapter B, section two, subsection A, so that the city administrator or their designee will best, will exercise their best judgment in determining the most important items, receive replacement on the agenda, and adding other items of business to come before the council. Part D would be adding that no item that has been properly submitted by a council member may be removed from the agenda before the agenda is published without prior written approval from the submitting council member. And that would ensure that um, council members are heard and that our our citizens are aware of all the information that our our council members believe is um, is important for them to know.
Would you do me a favor, Councilman Science, and read the actual rule that's in there prior to making this amendment that you're suggesting? Just for the record, so that the public knows what's in the council relations policy on that right now? It is currently was given the authority to the mayor to do that? Did you read that for the record?
I'm looking for it just a moment.
Okay, please, thank you. Just to clarify, so that the the public is well aware of that particular council relation policy that was in there.
While he's looking for that? Yeah, ask a question.
Sure. While he's looking for that, he's gonna ask. Go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, Frank, this, this is a, he's, he's referring to the council policy, correct? He, local, uh, local governmental code, though, gives the presiding officer the the option of removing things off the agenda?
By local rules, whatever the rules state, you have a local rule that allows a council member to place an item on the agenda for consideration. You also have a local rule currently that says city administrator and mayor will work on finalizing that agenda uh, and so forth. So kind of, they're kind of in conflict when it says a council member may place an item on the agenda, and then it says city administrator and mayor will work on finalizing that agenda. So my understanding is what the council member is proposing is that if it's been submitted properly by a council member, it can't be pulled by the mayor or even the city administrator without getting permission from the person who submitted it. It is, there is no state law with regards to being able to pull items off the agenda.
Prior to, prior to a meeting or prior to the posting or prior to the or during the meeting?
If there's no, there's no state law, so you have to look at local rules as to what they say. But there's no state law that authorizes the mayor to pull an item that's been properly placed on an agenda before uh, the meeting is posted. If a mayor pulls, wishes to pull an item during a council meeting, the mayor may do so, but it could be outvoted by the remainder of council if they want to continue with that item.
So then, this is kind of a moot point than do doing this.
No, what, the example being provided was an item was proposed by a council member, and it was never placed on the agenda.
It was removed, and and I found the the relevant section the mayor was asking me to find.
Yes, please.
So it is under the preparation of the agenda. The mayor and or city administrator administrator will exercise their best judgment in determining the most important items received for placement on the agenda and adding other items of business to come before council. An item not appearing on the agenda shall not be taken up for discussion as a matter of council business during any council meeting. However, the council may receive items as information. And then there are some subsections.
There we go.
Subsection A or subsection B. Any member of the city staff wishing to have an item placed on the agenda shall submit that item to the city administrator's office through regular supervisory channels, for example, or for approval. The city administrator may establish procedures for submission of routine items with or without his or her approval. Uh, subsection C, and we amended this previously. I have an older version. Uh, says any council member may request an agenda item to be placed on any uh, regular or special meeting as long as a request is submitted, and this is where the change is, five business days by twelve P M. Um, central standard time prior to the uh, council for an action item and three business days by twelve P M. Um, I'm sorry? Oh, by twelve P M, uh, prior to, uh, for discussion items. All such requests shall contain the following minimum information in writing, name and department of the person filling the request, the date the request is filed, and the date of the meeting at which the matter is to be addressed, the, a brief concise statement of the matter to be addressed, a copy of supporting documents and or attachments.
Thank you very much. So I just want to make sure we read that into the record, just to make sure that it's understood that I was doing nothing that was illegal. I was following the.
I didn't say it was illegal, sir.
Excuse me, I'm, excuse me.
I didn't say it was illegal.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to use that word. Sorry about that. Uh, I'm not doing anything that's not within the rules of the uh, council policy. So I was just exercising that in my best judgment. So there's nothing wrong in what I did there. And so you're wanting to change that, which I'm fine with that. It's within the purview of the council. Governing body makes those decisions, and if that's a decision you want to make, I'm perfectly fine with it. Just want to make for the record that it's understood that that council policy was in effect. I didn't put it in there. I didn't uh, do anything other than utilize my power as a mayor to do that, as written under council.
Right, and.
So I I can appreciate your observation of it, and um, let's go ahead and vote on it. Let's get it done. Okay, is that okay with you?
That's fine with me. I just wanted to say that.
So just get it done. Do we have a motion?
Again, again, don't think that the mayor shouldn't, anybody should have the power just to remove something that they don't like, just because they don't like it.
It's not because you don't like. That's just, that's what I was saying. It's in the rules. They just follow what I wanted to exercise in the rules. So can I call a vote on it? Let's go ahead and call a vote.
We would need a, a motion.
Okay, a motion from you? Do we have a second to that motion?
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the the updated language that I read earlier.
That's correct. Second to your motion.
I will second the motion to amend the the policy.
Councilman Lacer, second. Now, do we have any further discussion about? Hey, great. Let's go ahead and move on for the roll call. Councilman Valverde?
Hey.
Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lacer?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers? Uh, Councilman Burton? Okay, so we have one abstaining, one may, and three uh, in favor. Motion carries. Okay, move on down to the next item. Um, number eleven, discussion, excuse me. Uh, so we changed that already, so number twelve now, discussion and possible action pertaining to the city Woda office. Let me repeat that. Discussion and possible action pertaining to the city office at Woda. Councilman Lacer, item number twelve. Sir, you have the floor?
Thank, thank you. This uh, this item is what was in in question earlier. And my my questions were quite quite simple. As a council, we had not received any information as far as cost, occupancy, functionality of of this space. It was unfortunate that I had to submit an open records request to get this data. I have obtained the data. We have found out that it, there is about thirteen thousand dollars in expenses to occupy the space. That that moving forward. The clear definition of the functionality of that space, I don't think, has been determined yet. The occupancy of how it's going to be done. And importantly is how is the rent going to be paid and what kind of agreement do we have on on that space? Um, and those are the the functions, the the questions that I have is how is this space going to be used, and is this space really necessary? Is it, is it? Is it a need or is it a want? If if I can get somebody to to help me with that.
Mr. Lada, would you please? Thank you.
I'll try to answer some of your questions, uh, since I kind of came in towards the tail end of it. But uh, basically, uh, we did eventually get a request to, for the, when Mr. Uh, the the previous Economic Development Director retired. Uh, we did get a request from the Senator's office if they could occupy the entire space. Uh, so when it became obvious we were not going to fill the executive, uh, the EDC director, uh, Economic Director, uh, I guess at that time it was decided to move uh, community relations person back over here into this spot. Uh, so now all the staff is together. And uh, and so now we needed to find uh, an office uh, for the mayor since the senator had requested that he really would like to expand his footprint there. So we uh, looked around. We had different spaces. This this space was identified. Uh, this uh, we are still waiting for Woda to give us a copy of the lease. Uh, there will not be any actual charge to us other than it will be an in-kind. So whatever that lease comes out to be, uh, at least I'm not aware of what it is, but it will be part of our in-kind contribution. So what they owe us, that will be deducted off of there. So whatever the amount is for that office space. Uh, what it's going to be used for, obviously, the mayor is over there. He's he's housed over there. Uh, I kind of call it the city annex because, as you saw on Wednesday, uh, I see it as using it as a place. This building is not a very good place to have meetings. As you can see, that place, we we had, it does have an open area. Probably still got to tweak it as we're learning how to use all the space to its fullest capacity. Uh, and so I foresee, just like we had the other evening, uh, where we had a meeting of of different individuals. I also see like bringing in the property managers. I recommend that to the Community Development Manager to periodically meet with them on a regular basis. Also to meet business owners on a regular basis. Bring them in. Let's find out what their issues and concerns are. So again, uh, we get a lot of complaints that, hey, nobody listens to them. So this is an opportunity, again, to use that space. It's much easier to park over there once they find out where it's at, of course. That was a problem, but uh, but it's, but it's a good place, I think, and uh, it has a lot of potential. Um, so that's uh, it's it's eighteen hundred square feet. Uh, I think that was one of, I think I saw in your your thing, and and again, it's an in-kind contribution. I believe that's also how our auditors are covering the cost of how they foresee that. And so you see the costs, and that's um, uh, again, there's startup costs, which we have to do to get it prepped. Uh, but we're almost done. And I think it's, it's, we're getting there.
The uh, in in-kind, how 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 does that work? How how does that, how does that equate to numbers?
So whatever the, uh, once they send us a lease, they have not sent us a lease yet from Woda. We have requested them to give us a lease so that we can see it and see what the actual cost is. And and of course, what that will entail, then whatever that amount is, of course, we got to agree to it. Then that would be like if, uh, whatever our distribution is supposed to be, that will be taken out of that. Reduce that distribution by that amount. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's.
And 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 listening to the conversations with EDC and the partnership and all the transactions that have been going back and forth, I am very uncomfortable with that agreement, especially since we don't have a number to it. There's been too much with that partnership agreement that has not gone according to the documents. So I am very much against us moving forward. So I am very much against us moving forward without having an actual signed document to where we know 100% certainty what we're doing. Because the last thing I want to do is that we come back to the end of the agreement and we say, oh, by the way, you, you don't get a disbursement because it equal to what your rent was. So I would ask that we hold off and not do anything more, maybe vacate that space till we get an agreement. I'm not comfortable at all without having some kind of an agreement.
Like I said, we'll, we'll reach out to them again, I know.
Well, I, I don't think it's a matter of reaching out. I think it's in the best interest of the city that we cease and stop moving forward till we get an agreement, especially with the relationship, the way it's going with the partnership. I'm very uncomfortable with that.
Yeah, if I may be recognized. So I'd like to echo Mr. Lysa's comments. I am not comfortable entering into an agreement without any kind of information regarding how much it's going to cost. And I've brought those concerns to you before, Mr., our mayor, that you've brought ideas to us that did not have the information we needed. We did not have how long the length of the contract would be, how much it would cost us, et cetera. And it seems like we just, the city just went into this without thinking about those types of concerns, how much it would cost us in the long term. So we don't know how much Mr. Weiss wants to charge us for per square foot. We don't know how long we're going to be in there. We don't know how much it's, it's going to cost our city. And the, even though the, the meeting, I think, was a success on Wednesday, I don't think the space was conducive to it. We had to drag in chairs from outside in the hallway. We had people standing up. It's, it wasn't the right size venue for the type of meeting that we needed. So I actually think it would have been much better upstairs where we had plenty of room.
So I just want to give you a little bit of info, if you allow me to, pertaining to the history of how this transpired. And it's important that you know because I really didn't have anything to do with it. So let me, let me give you some history of how this occurred. What ended up happening was the, when I came into office in May, the old mayor's office was this little closet office that's here. And I felt personally, without telling anybody, it was way too small. It was less than, I don't know, maybe 100 square feet, maybe? Max room, two people can fit in there. Normally, the meetings I have are big. When I'm doing these big discussions with developers and working with different real estate agents and brokers and putting together meetings to try and help our city move forward, to get us out of our financial problems that we have, I'm holding these type of meetings. And, you know, traditionally, a mayor should have an office that's conducive to handling city business that would be appropriate to handle the type of people that would come in to meet with you. I didn't feel this office was adequate, so I didn't use it. And Mr. Peralas and I, one time, were talking about something regarding anything other than the office. And he came up and told me, at that time, we had that meeting, he said, "Mayor, I notice you're not using that office." I said, "No, I don't think I'm going to use it. I appreciate it, but I don't think I'll use that office after all." So that went by. Time went by a little bit longer. And then what happened is when we had Mr. Nastasi leave the officer at the senator's office, he told me that meeting, I think he mentioned, "There may be another office coming up soon for you. Maybe perhaps we can put you in there." And I said, "Okay, whatever you think, just let me know whenever you're ready." So when Mr. Nastasi left that office, he offered it to me. He said, "Mayor, it's free office space. We own that office space. You can have that office. Why don't you utilize Mr. Nastasi's office?" And I said, "Okay," but again, I had some reservations about it because I didn't want to office with Senator Menendez. I want to have my own privacy. I want to be able to have confidentiality on my paperwork and things that I do for the city. So I had not used it. And I waited about three weeks. Ms. Spence contacted me, and I guess she had Mr. Peralas spoken to her, to contact me about interest in that office when I was wanting to look at it at the mall to see what office perhaps I would want to use. In a small little way, it worked out well because when we were at the Jazz Fest, I received some correspondence from the attorney from Senator Menendez's office expressing a desire to take over the space, the full space of Mary Spence's office as well as Nastasi's office. That I equated to about a $3,100 gain for the city. So I was already starting to use the office a little bit, and it was going to start moving in, but I waited, and I'm glad I did. Because when that opportunity came up, the city was the first thing on my mind as to how can I make the city money? And so what I did is I gave up my office, that office. I could have stayed there, could have said, "I'm going to keep it and I'll stay there," but I didn't. And I told Senator Menendez at that Jazz Fest, "You're welcome to that full office at whatever rate we're going to give it to you. And the city's now going to earn not $3,000, but $6,000 or $5,000 and change," whatever it was going to be. So that helped the city with revenue. I now am out of an office, don't have anywhere to meet or anything, and I was fine with that. But then Mr. Peralas said, "I'll see what I can do to find it. We have free office space that belongs to us, to the city. It doesn't cost us a cent." And remember when Mr. Benford mentioned that certain amount of the city is available to us free? So we have those spaces. That was one of the spaces. And the others did not. They looked like it was more, cost more money to be able to get into those because it needed a lot of work. So I picked the space that was more conducive to having less work, less amount of money put into it, always looking out for the taxpayers' money. So when I got into that office, Ms. Spence and I would talk. She said, "Where do you want this? Where do you want that?" I said, "Ms. Spence, whatever you think is fine with me. You put it wherever you want, bring whatever you want in. You do whatever you think is fine. I'll go with whatever you say." At that point, then the opportunity came up to where I thought about, you know what? Let's not make this just the mayor's office. And this is what I told Ms. Spence. I said, "Let's not make it just the mayor's office. Let's make this an extension of the city. Let's make it an office, an annex office that whether you, Mr. Lysa, or Mr. Burton, or Mr. Sellers would like to hold a meeting there with some of your constituents or somebody you're entertaining for business with the city, get the key, go over there anytime you want and use it, anytime." Not only that, I instructed Ms. Spence, Mr. Lada, please put up another computer for those council members that want to use that computer and they can access the network to the city right there. Not only that, I said, "I'd also like to invite Bear County to put a kiosk there to do their city business, their county business, for permits, for all kinds of stuff." So I met with Adami Clark. She's very, very much interested in doing that. Then I said, "Why don't we put a kiosk of the city there? Once we get somebody to staff." That's why I was looking for interns to see if we can get somebody staffed so we have regular hours, that somebody will be there maintaining that office. I'm not going to be there every day. So I only meet it when I go meetings, have some work that I want to go do privately, whatever. And we'll probably put up some kind of barrier where it can cut it off or have some privacy. But you can still use it. Mr. Lysa can use it. Mr. Burton could use it. The fire chief could use it. Anybody in the city has access to that. So we put an alarm system in there, Mr. Lada's recommendation, Ms. Spence, so that anybody can comes in, we can track them coming in. Somebody from EDC wants to use it, they can use it. We have everything there, a phone and everything. So the idea is to an extension of the city services for the benefit of the community and being right smack in the middle of business commerce. And I thought that you were happy, I mean, I was sad to hear it, but it's okay that you didn't feel it was conducive for that meeting. Yeah, we had to bring some chair in, but it was no big deal. Chairs are right on the outside. So those are far, few between, but we've got access to use it. And I just feel like it's a perfect venue for us to expand the city because we've outgrown it here. There's no more space for anybody. My old office was Mr. Lada's office. That was my mayor's office back in 2000. But, you know, I don't want to create any waves. These are people that need to work out of these offices. I'm in and out, so I consider that. And that's what happened, Mr. Sines and Mr. Lysa. That was why I did what I did. And that's why I agreed, not what I did, what I did, but I agreed to go ahead and move there. And so it was Mr. Peralas that instigated, or not instigated, initiated that process. We all didn't think anything of it, you know, because it doesn't cost the city. That space is going to be the same kind of, just to relieve your fears. And we'll cut it short at this, I'll let you say a few more things. But basically, it's the same, no different than what we were doing with the office at the senator's office. It was our office. The senator was renting from us, but it was our office. That whole area was our office for free. And the same thing with that because it's the part of that contract we have with the mall. And then the same thing upstairs. So if you want to use those other ones, you can rent them out, do whatever you want, you see? So it's no different. It's just a little bit bigger, more conducive, and you guys can use it as well. So go right ahead, sir.
Thank you for, for that information.
I'm sure, I'm just trying to make sure you got all the info.
Right, and, and, and listening to Mr. Benford earlier and, and previous meetings, the, the property that we have access to, to lease and move forward is, if I'm not mistaken, I might be wrong with the numbers, is A71, which is a Spirit Halloween. That is what's under the agreement with Truist Bank, is my understanding. And that space only is what the agreement reads. Other than that, the space that we were using at the senator's office, we were paying rent for that. So it, it's not an unequal thing, but we can go into all this debate back and forth. But there, there's a lot of information that was delivered that I don't think is 100% accurate from what I have in my notes and what I have witnessed in the EDC meetings. But for the sake of time, I just think we should stop using that space until we get an agreement, simply because we don't know how much it's going to cost. Earlier in your discussion, you were saying that office space in that particular building is going for $16 a square foot. At 1,800 square feet, that's $28,000. That's way beyond our means, so.
But it's okay, I understand your concern.
And thank you.
And no, and no taking.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Spence, just very quickly close on it. Who was understanding that space wasn't going to cost us anything, right? It's supposed to be a free space. We just, we had to have that lease agreement in place because it's no cost to us.
So there's a dollar value to that space? The city is not incurring any payments, any rent payments in lieu of the distributions that we're not receiving?
It's an in-kind costing.
Yeah, it's an in-kind, basically, Mr. I wouldn't, I mean, Mr. Peralas is the one who recommended.
And, and, and that's fine. I just, I just want to make sure that we have a document that says we will not be charged anything in the future.
But basically, you just don't want us to office there right now, do anything? You don't want us to be there?
It, it's not a matter of you or anybody else. It's in the best interest of the city that we have a written document. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Let's just get this over with.
We have a motion already by councilman? Do we? No? Okay, go ahead, sir.
I make a motion to approve the mayor's office.
The city annex office.
Annex office for the use of city staff and, and mayor and it, it's a great location and I think it would cost us a lot more to move the fish tank, find a place to put the tables. It's an in-kind. I mean, we, we can, we, we can get your contract. I, I think Albert can expedite that real quickly, but let's, let's go ahead and move forward with this and just let it stay as is.
Hey, do we have a second to Jack's, on Mr. Councilman Burton's motion? Do we have a second to it?
I want to amend it.
Okay. You need a second before you amend?
I'm waiting for the second.
A second.
Okay. Have I read the seconds?
Now I want to amend it.
Okay, then we have a motion on the floor now to amend. What is your amendment, Councilman?
My amendment is to continue with the lease. We're not going to close it down, as Jack said, but we're going to, we're going to continue to get that lease and expedite it. It's something in writing.
Okay, I don't understand the motion, but maybe you can help, Mr. President.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Sellers, but the amendment is to get something in writing to, to confirm that there's no charge to the city? Is that what?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
So the motion is to continue using the space. The amendment is to continue using the space but get something in writing that there's no charge to the city? Second to the amendment.
Hey, do we have a second to the Councilman Sellers amendment?
Can I second that? Second.
Councilman Burton has seconded that motion. Let's go ahead and call for the first amendment, correct? So Councilman Valverde on the amendment, of Mr. Sellers' amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Sines.
Nay.
Councilman Lysa.
Nay.
Councilman Sellers.
Yay.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three votes, motion passed. Now let's go to the first motion. We have to go to that now?
Correct, the motion is now to continue using the space as amended, which was the amendment at no charge. Get something in writing to show that it's at no charge.
So as stated, we have a motion from Councilman Valverde. Let's go ahead and take a record vote. Mr. Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman Sines?
Nay.
Councilman Lysa?
Nay.
Councilman Sellers?
Yay.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes three, three to two. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. So we got that. Let's move on to item number 13. Discussion and action follow up from Councilman Miguel Valverde's presentation to the council on salary and compensation studies. So I put this on the agenda to follow up because I want to make sure that Councilman Valverde has the due time to continue moving forward towards those studies that he did and the hard work that he put in. He concurred once I talked to him and asked him if it was okay. And so this is where we're at now. Councilman Valverde, you have the floor.
Thank you. The last time I, I presented the comparable cities PowerPoint presentation, at the end, I had some recommendation for the council. And the recommendations, one of us was to, we need to concentrate and provide better direction to staff on what needs to be done for our city to succeed. And the reason for this recommendation is upset for a while that it seems that the council works for staff instead of staff working for the council. We must understand that staff doesn't live fear. Council does, and it is our responsibility to work together as a team to take action to provide for the residents' needs and maintain a clean and safe city. The other recommendation was that we need to pay attention to the city budget expenditures. The reason for this recommendation is I've seen many cases where the city has spent money unnecessarily. For example, not too long ago, the council decided to hire an agency to recruit full-time city administrator. City paid thousands of dollars only to put it on hold due to hiring an interim, and there was no follow-up after that. Another example is the city picked up a couple of dogs from a multifamily unit and became liable for a huge, unexpected expense of approximately $9,000 to $10,000. And I believe the city never recovered that money. I'm sure, and I'm not too sure, but, and please correct me if I'm wrong, whoever, if anyone knows this, but I believe the city has paid unknown amount of money to abate several code violations and never recovered the cost from the violators. The one that took the cake was the Wonderland of the Americas deal. Very one in the council trusted attorneys in partnership. Then came the big slap on the face when Sid sent an email that it wasn't his fault, that the city didn't do its research.
Mayor?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, but.
That's okay.
This deals with his presentation on council salary and compensation studies. And we're talking about some other items that are not dealing with compensation and salary studies. Am I mistaken?
No, that's fine. Um, it's a little broad. We wanna shorten it up to focus on the council salaries and compensation. And then at the workshop.
Well, no, I'm, I wasn't prepared for that because I had already presented it.
Okay.
And everybody, everybody's uh was here.
Does that have any relation with salary compensation? I didn't too.
What I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Not salary. No, just, just to recommend, I'm just going over the recommendations of the comparison. I, I misunderstood.
History.
Yeah, what's that?
I, I believe he's trying to give history.
Yeah, I think he's giving background history on what he brought to the salary compensation. See, in the last meeting, remember, were you here? He did a PowerPoint, um, and it was regarding not only compensation, but positions, budget, he was discussing a bunch of other things. So um, that was the gist of this item on the agenda. And, and I'll allow it if he wants to.
Was, was that where he gave a comparison from other cities?
Yeah, huh, right, yeah, okay.
Oh, I'll go ahead and continue.
Go ahead.
Uh, the next recommendation was to have workshops to revise all positions and salaries. The reason for this recommendation, it is common sense that our, our city cannot keep up with other cities with much more revenue. We need to take a closer look at position titles to study not how hiring additional employees or keeping up with other cities will impact the budget. Our city is not growing to where we need to hire more people. In my opinion, the problem is our city management and not enough council involvement. Need to look at the PD rank structure and see what justification, what the justification is, because this impacts our budget. For example, out of the ten selected cities, Balcony Heights and Live Oak have six police department corporal positions. The difference is the general budget revenue. Balcony Heights is at five million and Live Oak is at twenty million. The corporal positions along with the COLA and SEP increase will result in a significant increase in pay. Another example is the yearly salary for the judge. Out of the ten cities, only two cities pay more than, than we do. Leon Valley pays forty-one thousand, Live Oak's thirty-six thousand, and Balcony Heights pays twenty-nine thousand. But the difference is Leon Valley has a revenue of fourteen million, Live Oak is twenty million, and we only have five million. So all I'm suggesting is that the council must be more alert and keep an eye on what's going on. All of this may be justified, but we don't know until we investigate it. And it was suggested to put a committee together to follow up on this issue. In my opinion, I believe it would be more beneficial for the council to work this out instead of getting staff or residents involved. And that was my recommendation.
A workshop would be more.
Workshops.
Indeed, okay.
Yes, sir, that's, that's what I had recommended.
Um, I'm all for that. I think we should discuss it, and we should set some time aside and uh discuss that, and just a specific workshop for that. Um, you wanna do this before the end of the year? You wanna do it after the end of the year?
Well, we can do it anytime. I mean.
Preference, you're gonna be the chair of it?
Because the uh, because the budget year already started, right?
Right.
Yeah, but we need to look at some of this pretty quick.
Okay. So you wanna do it after the new year?
After the New Year's holidays, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do it like.
We'll look at somewhere between the beginning of the first fiscal year of twenty-five and the nick, within those couple of weeks? Perhaps, and then see where we can fit it in to do some action items for the uh fourth Monday of January. And we can look at putting it on the agenda.
Yeah, may I? So we have a lot of things coming up till the month of January. Uh, we'll be doing the city administrator
Right.
uh, position, reviewing all those resumes, putting our interview to questions together, performing the interviews, all that, doing the city administrator selection. On top of the other things we've already added to the special meeting for
Right.
January, so I'm not sure adding this on.
Let's see what we can work out.
More conducive to add this to February.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's coming upon us to work as much as we have to, because see, if I may, uh, no, no offense to anybody, okay? Please don't take offense to this, but not kicking a dead dog, let's just roll him over a little bit. If we would have been ahead of the game on this city manager stuff, then we probably would have been able to do this more, but it is what it is. We'll work it out. We'll work it out and try to make it work to, you know, get these things done. So my point is that, you know, let's be a lot more proactive in doing these kinda things and getting ahead of the game instead of, you know, and, and I just, you know, I'm not trying to offend anybody, okay? I just wanna put that out there that let's be a little bit more proactive and get in ahead of the game. So that we can tackle a lot of these things that we've lost time on, that we should have been able to get to sooner later. But I can see that we are, you know, we are burdened with a lot. So I, I take note what you say. Councilman, very much. Yes, sir. Okay, Councilman Sellers?
Yes, I, I believe that when Councilman Valverde first brought this up, we discussed a workshop at that time.
Okay.
But we never had one.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'm all on board for a workshop on that because I really liked his comparison chart. Yeah, if we don't have a workshop for the entire comparison, perhaps we could minimize a, a portion of it and, and include that uh, uh, into the hiring of a city administrator
Okay.
in January.
Good point.
To do that comparison, at least, at least that comparison.
Okay, well noted. Alright, so um.
I think that would be part of the compensation package research as we identify a candidate. Right, yeah, so we would have to do some kind of analysis before we extend an offer to any potential candidate, so.
Okay, great. Alright, sounds good. Thank you so much for working through this with me, council. Um, so Mr. Valverde, and then I will look forward to putting something on for you. We'll discuss it maybe, or give you a call or something?
Uh, yes, sir, yeah, because I know January, January is a pretty full month because of the special meetings and stuff. Maybe we can do it at the beginning of February.
Okay, and then we can uh share it with our colleagues.
Alright.
Do that and pass it around. Okay, great, fantastic. So now we're gonna go with the department reports and Q and A for the Police Department, Fire Department, Community Development, Economic Development, and Public Affairs. Let's start out with um the Police Department. Um, I do have a quick question. Why is the chief not sitting up here anymore? He's over there in the back. What happened with that? Why, what happened to the musical chairs there?
Mayor, we rotate them.
Okay, good to know, just wondering. I didn't know if there was a purpose behind it or what. Mr. uh, Johnahara, Police Chief Johnahara, go ahead, please, do you wanna bring this up to date on anything?
Yes, sir. Um, two parts on an update, update that was requested about the uh, the council furniture, but I, I guess let me get the small part out of uh the, the way, I guess our council packet, if anybody has any questions if I can answer, maybe get that out of the way first.
Okay.
We're good, okay. Yes, sir.
Real quick on the numbers, Chief, I see that the numbers are continuing to, to climb on the uh, on all areas, so just keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, request, Mayor, I know it was from Mr. Lada, and I think it was just to give everyone a, an update on the
Yes, sir.
furniture. So um, I'm gonna work backwards, but from the meeting, the special meeting that we held, or that y'all held on uh Monday, December second, uh, where y'all approved the upgrade on the, the dispatch console furniture from X-Bix. Um, and that was, of course, on December second. Uh, the very next day, Tuesday, December third, uh, I fired off emails to the project manager from X-Bix, uh, and all representative from Bear Met nine-one-one informing them of a your council's approval, requesting if I needed a new contract or that contract that was floating around when we had discussed the uh, the upgrades, and I know there was a lot of discussion uh from uh, from prior council meetings back. Um, Tuesday, December third, additional email was sent to Bear Met nine-one-one requesting price quotes from recommended vendors for the nine-one-one recorder as well, uh, being that I know whether we were gonna move forward and that was gonna be probably a question that had come back also too from the past. Uh, Wednesday, December fourth, updated a signed, I, I updated and signed a new contract uh, that was sent over to me by X-Bix, uh, and of course copied to everybody in the Bear Metro world, uh, which there's about four to five people that are contracted to us, uh, assigned to us, a project manager, a, a whole bunch of people, so of course, Mr. Lada as well. Uh, also too, on Wednesday, December fourth, the email was received from Bear Met nine-one-one, uh, recommending different vendors. Uh, and the two different vendors was one that we had looked at, uh, for that nine-one-one recorder, one was VistaCom. And then Mr. Taylor from Bear Met nine-one-one had also uh asked us to reach out to Exacom. Uh, that same day, I uh requested price quotes from both. And surprising over the years, I thought with price increases, we were going to receive uh the price quote that was quoted to us. Uh, it was fifty-two thousand and some change uh about four years ago, three years ago. And surprisingly, Thursday, December fifth, uh, they send us a upgrade, or a price quote of thirty-eight thousand, four ninety-nine and sixty-five, well, excuse me, sorry, forty-six thousand, three fifty-one. That's for the recorder. In between all of this going on, uh, there is some confusion with X-Bix, the console, uh, people that are that were gonna supply the furniture for us. They wanted us to make payment, but I believe that there was a meeting in between that Bear Met nine-one-one was gonna pay for the project. So additional emails were sent out to Bear Met to make sure that they were gonna cover the, the project, so I could come back and just reassure everyone that we're not paying for it. I, I know Mr. Messick was involved in that too as well from that uh, special council meeting that we had. Uh, as of now, uh, there's been a project manager from Bear Met assigned to uh our project with the dispatch upgrade. Uh, and to finalize it, they have a project date of April second that they're looking at a project uh, target date. Prior to that, they wanna have some sit downs with our dispatch supervisor as we get closer, so I'm guessing maybe March. We're gonna stay in communication. Uh, they want us to visit the quarry one run, being that that's our, where our dispatchers are going to visit and dispatch from during that week project. Where we'll also communicate with Davila Electrical, and y'all have seen some of those bills as well because we had some electrical issues. The main transformer issue has been taken care of, but there's a couple of things that they want rewired in the electrical room, number one, and dispatch. So as of now, everything looks good. Uh, it's set to kick off, like I said, April second. And uh, we're tentative on that date, but it looks like we're locked in on that date. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What date was that, Chief, again? I'm sorry?
April second of twenty twenty-five, yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions to Chief Johnahara? Hey. How's the uh reserve program coming on? I know that Councilman, former Councilman White asked about that. I had asked about it a couple of months, a few months ago.
Yes, sir, there's.
Coming along?
I would like to actually sit down and, and if we have some time, I know that's not on the agenda right now, and I know there's a big interest to that. I know uh Councilman White had brought up something in the past, a letter from Henry Dominguez. So what I decided to do, just to CYA, is I had either Ms. Merle or Ms. Sanchez, I can't remember who it was at the time, but this was maybe two months ago, post it on TML. And also too, with our um recruiting that we're doing and by word of mouth. So from, what, two months, maybe going on three months now, we've only had two applicants specifically come in for the reserve program. Specifically, they do not want to work on patrol. So usually, these are retired officers that have worked and finished their career. So uh, we're in the process right now of conducting a background on one. He is currently with Bear County. We met him at our firearms range, and there's a second email that we just recently received on another. So um, we currently have four reserves in our program, and if these work out and everything is good in their background, uh, then we'll probably bring these next two on.
Okay.
I'm gonna put them, hopefully, I would like to put them on patrol, but uh, right now, we're at full capacity. Knock on wood, that's a good thing. And um, so, yeah, we, we, we went through a, a stormy area, but uh, I'm gonna utilize them in investigations, cause we're down a couple. We have that frozen position. And we also have a, our, our lieutenant that uh recently was, he's out on injured. So uh, we're, we're swim pickings upstairs in investigation, so myself and the other lieutenant were handling cases as well, so. Uh, I'm back to what I was saying, is I'm gonna use the reserves as where I can need them.
Thank you very much for that. Um, do you have anything else you wanna bring us?
No, sir, that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Thank, uh, Fire Chief, you have the floor.
Uh, no, I have nothing to add unless anybody has any questions regarding.
You wanna touch base on that emergency real quick?
Yeah, so what I, I found the information on that, and I had seen it several times, and I kinda wanted to read over it, and that, that, that was what took kind of the delay on that. I wanted to sort through some of the older information. But what I sent you guys was kinda just a, a real brief synopsis of, of the plan and how we entered an agreement and when we entered an agreement. And then what I sent you guys regarding the, the responsibilities and roles is just a breakdown of, of kind of direction of where staff members and Mayor uh fall into the uh, the organizational chart for Bear County. And, and, you know, and some of those roles change depending on the, the, the type of incident, you know, they can e- expand or contract with with the, with the, the nature of the event. Um, so if y'all had any questions regarding that, or if you had the time to look it over, um, you know, more than, uh, entertaining questions from you guys.
Go ahead, Councilman Burton. This, this pertains to chain of command, right, in, in an emergency, or?
Yes, the, the Incident Command System, NIMS and all that. And I met with a, a gentleman from the Bear County Officer Emergency Management. It's a kind of, I wanted an update on all the information I had, since some of it was kinda dated, and he talked about the uh NIMS classes one hundred that, that you have and a couple of other council members have. He said that they're kind of, they may be going away with that, and they're, they're creating another class. But I'm pretty sure, hopefully, they can grandfather some of you other guys in, just kind of.
So will any of us have to go to class uh for the emergency?
Uh, majority of it is online.
Okay.
For what you guys have.
But we need to do that, right?
It, it, yes, but I'm, I'll find out for sure what he
Okay.
says regarding that information, but for the most part, it's on, online, and I think there may be an hour long, if that.
It, it's a really easy, it's a, it, if you.
You did a great job. Thank you so much. This is exactly what I needed and have, and so we're ready. Uh, anything happens, the city's ready to act.
And like I said, like I sent on the email, the, the big book i- is on the L drive under Emergency Management, and that covers all the annexes and, and all the different types of scenarios.
This is basic, the basic meat and potatoes though.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Uh, Chief, is this uh, like a every-year update, or, because I've had this before, so am I covered there, or do I have to?
No, you're covered. Once you do it, that's it, but I mean, it's good to refresh just on the roles and responsibilities and, and, you know, that kind of, that kind of thing. It's, it's good.
Alright, thank you.
Great. Community Development, is that Mr. Lada, or is that gonna be Ms. Spence on?
Uh, it's gonna be me, Community Development. She's, she's out on vacation, so unless anybody has any questions.
Pretty much. If you don't have anything, we can move on.
And the only thing is, uh, on Whataburger, uh, this Thursday, we're projected to break the sidewalk. Uh, to try to find that uh break in the sewage line.
Okay, great.
So, well, then we're hoping, we're crossing our fingers. I haven't got a.
Economic Development. Nothing?
Mayor?
Public Affairs? Yes, yes, sir, Mr.
I asked the chief something.
Absolutely, absolutely, go right ahead.
Just getting back to codes, uh, I wanna backtrack a little bit, but I just thought about it. Um, you know, when, when a car breaks down on the side of the highway, they put this sticker on it, you have twenty-four hours, okay? Do you have the ability and the authority to do that vehicle? That's abandoned or unregistered in the streets of Balcony Heights?
Yes, sir, and, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Sellers, that white duly that uh, that was up on the screen, I think it was one of your slides, or one of the slides that we had seen earlier. Uh, the former code officer, she had texted me, she had emailed me or texted me, that she wanted to have a meeting for that particular vehicle. Um, the other ones I, I'm not too familiar with, but yes, sir, to answer your question, uh, what we do is we tag the vehicle, we allow the owner or whoever it is forty-eight hours. And it's pretty much universal from what other cities do, and then what we do is we, uh, we impound the vehicle. Uh, it, it has to fit some type of criteria that it's, it's either in the roadway. We find those a lot on the highway
Right.
when someone can't, but yes, sir.
But if we have a, 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 a vehicle that's not registered, that's not drivable, then you can do that?
Yes, sir, and, and I've, I've actually kinda leaned on our, our, one of our officers. He's retired, and he sounds like the gentleman that.
You have to have a request from the council or staff?
No, sir, uh, but it's, it's going into, to make sure that the vehicle has not moved in those forty-eight hours. Usually, you get compliance from whoever owns it and hasn't kept it up to date.
Right.
But from what I was understanding, like the city of San Antonio, what they do is that they, they mark the street to make sure that, like, the tire location, they go into some other criteria to make sure that they're not gonna cause a, a complaint, basically. But, and they monitor it after, you know, within that timeframe, and then they'll seize it.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's move right along, Ms. Spence, real quick.
For Economic Development, um, after the regular EDC meeting in November, the joint workshop was held with city council members and the EDC members as well. And a, a couple of very positive uh, items came out of that meeting, so I'm on, on the right track. Position. And other than what's in the report.
Okay, um, so we're gonna go ahead and move over. We don't need to bring anything on city administrator. Did you, Albert? Okay, so um, do we have a motion to convene?
To adjourn?
To adjourn, excuse me. We already convened.
There?
Yes.
May I say something, please?
Yes, Councilman Valverde.
On the uh announcements? On the announcements, I want to thank Mr. Lada and Mrs. Spence for everything they have done for our city. And I think Mr. Lada has done an outstanding job as the interim. And Mrs. Spence has always gone above and beyond her duties, so I want to thank you all for that. I know you are not going to be here for the next council meeting, so I needed to say that today.
Good observation, Mr. Valverde. I'm sorry, I didn't pick up on that. Thank you, Mr. Lada. Thank you, Mrs. Spence, very much. And with that, I'd like to close with saying that I would like to thank each and every one of the council members for helping move this meeting along very well. I look forward to more meetings like this, and hopefully we just cut them shorter. Thank you very much, everyone. Merry Christmas to everyone, and you and your family.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, and motion to adjourn is from Councilman Science.
Second.
Now, we have a second Councilman Valverde, and then we call vote, Councilman Valverde. We don't have to do anything there, right?
Say again?
We don't have to roll call. Okay, time is 10:12 PM. We are finished.